Welcome to the North Topsail Beach Monthly Board of Aldermen Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 2nd. We're thrilled that you all could be here. So with that in mind, I'm going to ask everybody to please have their cell phones turned to silent, and I am going to call the meeting to order, and we're going to ask Alderman Benson to do the invocation.
Please stand, remain standing for the pledge. Bless this town and may it remain a beautiful and friendly place. We pray that this board makes fair and informed decisions this morning. We also pray that our police officers, firefighters, and members of our armed forces here and around the world remain safe as they risk so much for our security. We also pray that the town was spared from hurricanes this season and other natural disasters, and that everyone associated with the town remains safe and secure. Amen.
And Mayor Pro Tem is not here today, so Rick, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before I ask for an approval on the agenda, I did just want to let everybody know I wanted to pass on a message from Tom Leonard, the Mayor Pro Tem, that he's at the hospital with his wife. She's got to have some additional surgeries done, and today was the day they were told to come for pre-op. So with that, I am going to ask for an approval of the agenda. Well, we need a first and a second, and then if there's changes.
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any changes?
Yes.
Can I, maybe Chipneys answers a procedural question. We're going to have a different board for half of the meeting. Do we approve the agenda for the whole meeting, or do we approve the agenda?
Until the operational part?
Right.
I'm sorry, until the operational part?
Rick's question is, we have our current seating board until, up until the operational part where we will switch, and the oaths will be given to the new board members.
The organizational meeting on the agenda.
Yes. So does it make sense to approve the whole agenda right now, or do we do just our part of it?
I think you do your part of it.
Okay.
You approve your part of it, and then when the new folks are sworn in, they're going to have oversight over the subsequent pieces, so they should have a chance to approve those.
So then, it sounds like what we need to do is approve it through D, through organizational meeting, just in, well, but see this, do you want to move up the appreciation certificates?
I need you to have, you have to.
I'm just trying to look for a clear break for you.
So I think the clear break would be through item D?
But I think actually if we just, if we just made the certificate of appreciation B.
Okay.
And then that would be C and D, then you have a clear break right there.
Yep, that's perfect.
Okay, so everybody can understand?
So moved.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we're gonna, did you get that, Lexi?
Yeah, I have a question for council. I can't, without him first taking oath of office as mayor, can I have him sign as mayor? Because I do not believe.
What does he need to sign?
So all of the certifications of appreciation, all of those have to have a signature by the mayor?
Well, if they're approved by this mayor, this mayor can sign them.
Okay.
Unless the board wants to put them back and have the new mayor sign them.
Okay.
Or, I mean, we can just move it up, and Rick can sign them after the meeting when you give him his stack of paperwork to sign, if that's all right with you.
Right, thank you.
You mean that way you're not signing your own?
I don't want to sign my own.
Okay.
No. Okay. Okay, you're good, Lexi. Okay, then we're going to move on to public presentations and hearings, and we're going to start with our 24-25 audit.
All right, good morning. So I'm here to present the 24-25 audit. This is our first year auditing North Topsail Beach. Have good news, we issued an unmodified opinion, also referred to as a clean audit opinion.
I'm sorry, sir, can you just back up with your name, so everybody knows who you are?
All right, Lee Grissom, CPA, S. Preston Douglas. So the good news, we issued before the December 31st deadline, we got the audit out. We issued it to the Local Government Commission, November 25th, 2025. And considering how we just, you guys just contracted with our firm early September, that was a pretty good feat to get this audited out. So give your staff a lot of credit, as well as your outsourced accounting firm to get this audit out in a timely manner. The books overall, from an internal control standpoint, were in great shape. I think we had one journal entry that we assisted with as the auditing firm. We worked very closely with GWI for this audit. I think overall that the accounting records were much improved from the prior year, given everything that I saw. There were no budget overages, no bank rec issues. I was really impressed. There was a new purchase order form, increased controls over ACH, increased payroll controls, digitizing internal processes. I thought there was a lot of improvements that I was impressed with overall. There was one internal control finding, for those of you who've looked at the report. We had about a million dollars in total of errors that we had to correct. And just to give you some context, that does sound terrible and scary, but a lot of times when you bring in a new audit firm, that's when you see prior period adjustments. I'll speak into the LGC, and they look at hundreds and hundreds of reports. So most of the time, you'll see cleanup when a new crowd comes in and has a different opinion. So yes, that is, you know, there was a cleanup that was needed. But, you know, just to put it in context, it's not exactly unusual. And just to point out, there has been a lot of turnover.
Sorry to interrupt you. I've read the audit report. You need to be more specific. The million dollars you're talking about is a prior period adjustment.
Correct.
Not to the financials, because I think what we're doing is we're mixing. You looked at 25, as I understand it, 25 looked good to you. The adjustments you're talking about and the issues you talked about relate to the previous year.
Correct, correct.
Right, okay, because right, because when you presented that, it looked like all this stuff was happening in this current year. It's not.
Yeah, and that's a good point. I was about to bring another difference in what we did this year versus last year, from a comparative standpoint. And I'll touch on that now. For example, restricted cash. For the most part, if it's, if cash is not in the general fund, you sort of take the position it all should be restricted. So if the prior audit firm or the prior staff, they had a lot of stuff in unrestricted. So that would have been almost a $9 million change. So that was a position we took as a firm, and then working with GWI, they agreed, and the town agreed. So there was a lot of improvements on this set of financials, like your beach maintenance fund. We broke out a lot more detail between the grant sources and how the money was spent. So I think with the goal of, you know, when you close that project, it's a little easier to demonstrate to your, you know, the regulatory agencies how that money was spent. And I didn't feel 100% comfortable with the way from, I didn't spend a lot of time looking at the prior audits, but it didn't look like they really thoroughly went through that. And there wasn't a single audit on the prior audit either, which I think that was probably not correct. But anyway, but I didn't give, I didn't, in my professional opinion, I didn't feel like we needed to have a bunch of internal control findings. I thought there was great improvements with the town, and I was happy with that. And the feedback and sort of the recommendations is sort of continue that on. And I'm hoping the controls, I know you spent a lot of money with GWI, but sometimes those control improvements can save money for years to come if you continue to implement. I've already had two audit clients this year where there was check frauds and things like, you know, check washing, where it was like $40,000 in a couple of instances. So I think some of the stuff Deborah Mack and her crowd were doing, you know, maybe that would, you know, save you some heartache in the future. Couple of housekeeping items. Management provided full access to records. We didn't have any disagreements. There were no new accounting policies, and we did not consult with other auditors for our audit opinion. And from a financial trend standpoint, and we'll go briefly through the graphs, but I mean, you can just even see on the screen, the first one, very, very positive, particularly in the last three fiscal years. You'll see that in a moment. But the financial trends in the last 10 years have been trending very positively. Total assets.
For everybody, the blue standing for what, and the red?
Cash, and red is restricted.
And we'll get to that, we'll get to that, too. But I was just touching on.
There it is, there it is at the bottom, thanks.
And just to touch real quickly, government-wide total assets, $65 million at June 30th, 2025. Total liabilities, $15.6 million. Net position, $50.3 million. And overall, there was an increase in net position of $556,000. The general fund added $1.8 million, and it would have added $4 million if it wasn't for transferring to other funds. So the, you know, general fund showing a lot of strength. General fund unassigned fund balance, $12.6 million. That's really strong. And overall, the governmental funds did decrease by 2.4, but a lot of that was beach maintenance. There was almost $9 million, or $9.4 million in beach maintenance expenditure. So that's why you saw a decrease in governmental funds. Fire station fund number two, there was $2.4 million.
Before you leave beach maintenance, because you're looking at a cash basis, money that's owed to us by FEMA is not counted in that, right?
That's a good, that was a good point, too.
If we brought that in, we would have had more of a positive position, correct?
Correct. And I'll put, I don't know, sometimes I don't want to get too much into the weeds. I know Rick likes the weeds, but if you were to look at the balance sheet, I'll.
No, more of us like the weeds, so we're okay.
Well, I like the weeds, too. I'd rather do that than talk about, yeah. Anyway, on page 13, one interesting thing, I was talking about restricted versus unrestricted. Working with Deborah Mack, we actually showed unrestricted cash of $4 million in the beach maintenance fund. And I would have, without working with her, I would have put it all unrestricted. But she determined that fund needs to be closed, and that money could just be transferred out and used. So I just wanted to point that out. That was one of the last-minute changes we made. Interest income, $2 million, $2.1 million this year. I thought that was really strong. And one other, just to note, you know, I look at a lot of municipality financials. There was a lot of transferred activity, which I thought, right away when I looked at this audit, I'm like, what in the world's going on, moving money everywhere? But most of that, I think, was just moving the money to beach maintenance fund. But that just is a little bit of an outlier, and it's probably unusual historically at the town as well. I guess let's, we'll go through the graphs now. And there's not too much to talk about, other than just, you know, positive trends. And they've already, we've already skipped the first graph, but I guess that's okay. Yeah, go back, go back, go back to the first one. And this is, this is your fund balance in governmental funds. This is really kind of the equity in your governmental funds. And you can see, if you go, this is 10 years, go back to 2026, you're at $3.6 million. And then go 10 years later, you're at $36 million. And one thing, just to point out, I think what that does show is the sophistication, particularly with the project fund activities, it really has increased at the town quite a bit. If you're trying to justify GWIs, you know, using them and all the money and all the resources, I mean, the sophistication has really increased dramatically, really since 2022, 2022 to 2025. And then when you take that with the turnover in the finance officer position, and all the reporting requirements under FEMA and everything, yeah, I just want to kind of point that out. Let's go to the next one. Next slide. Now, the Local Government Commission, this one's really, really important. This is your emergency fund and the general fund. And being a beach, beach town, you want a higher reserve. But you guys are at 211%, so almost a little over two years in reserve in your general fund. That means that's unassigned fund balance that basically doesn't have any restrictions. It could be used for emergency. So you guys are in a, town's really in a great shape from that standpoint. Let's go to the next one. Okay, and similar to the other two graphs, this is cash by fiscal year. So go all the way back to 2016, you were just under $5 million. At June 30th, 2025, you were at $34 million. So significant cash balances relative to, you know, 10 years ago. And most of that being in the last three fiscal years. Next one is outstanding debt by fiscal year. And I'll just, I'll just say at 2000, at June 30th, 2025, you're at $11.6 million. Okay, last one, property tax collection percentage. And for the most part, you guys are in the same, around 99% each year, fairly consistent. So not too much to look at there. But again, in summary, clean audit opinion. You know, again, we're the independent CPA firm. We felt comfortable that you can rely on these financial statements. Of course, it's not perfect. It's, we don't audit every cent, but, you know, we use materiality thresholds. But we feel comfortable that this represents the activity and the balances at the town for this fiscal year. Again, big internal control improvements. I thought there was financial reporting improvements quite a bit, as I pointed out a couple of things already. And solid financial trends, and got the audit out in a timely manner, which that's a great thing. Not everybody does that. So, you know, give your manager and the rest of the staff a lot of credit for pushing me hard to make sure we got this out. Lastly, as far as recommendations, I know you have a new finance officer. I am not familiar with him. I did not work with him. I wish him luck. I hope, continue to build on the improvements made, would be my recommendation. Maybe get governmental accounting training. And certainly, I always tell people to build relationships within the state if he does not have that already. Just, not just to be relying on the auditor or GWI, but you just, you know, just to bounce ideas. I always recommend that. I think that's a great idea. And of course, stay on top of any grant projects or project funds. That's where all the errors are. So certainly reach out to me or somebody else in the state before it becomes, you know, that, you know, the town had had issues in the past where those funds just were, it didn't seem like they were accounted for correctly. All right, that wraps up everything I wanted to cover. Is there any questions?
No, I just wanted to make a couple of statements. Beth, you came in right on time, because he was giving kudos to Deborah Mack from GWI. So I think those of us that have been on the boards, that whole time that you had up there from 2016 up to now, there's just been so much progress that has happened, and it's been very much a board and management effort to get rid of the USDA loan. We've had a lot of help from the Carters when it comes to financial planning. GWI has been a big help, so I'm very proud of where we are today with our financials for the town. So does anybody have questions? I'll start with Rick.
You knew I'd have questions for you. Just so we can go on the record, no misappropriation of funds, no cash missing, correct? You're making, these are accruals you're talking about. They're accounting adjustments. They're not money missing.
Correct. And if you, if you wanted to, Deborah has a spreadsheet, if you ever wanted to see that specifically, the details, if she has some information.
When you're doing accrual stuff, sometimes people look at it and say, what do you mean, there's a million-dollar adjustment? There wasn't a million, the cash, if you looked at your cash statement, the cash was there.
Correct, correct.
And so I think that's always been a part of stuff. No change in town policy over the year, but so 25 is pretty good. How do we make sure, are you, are you confident with the changes we've seen and everything else, that going forward, we're not going to have a repeat of that? Because I think we've done is, I think that Alice, now we have a finance director, we're going to be filling those positions and stuff. It sounded like you're pretty confident with the new processes that are, or not the new process, the processes that we're following and stuff like that are pretty solid going forward.
Well, the limitation of an audit, we're sort of past focused. And really, as much as I think I'm the most important person here, I'm not. And it's really you guys and who you hire, and so it's up to you guys at the end of the day. I mean, hopefully you can listen to what I'm saying, get some, get some value out of it. But, you know, there's, I'm kind of past, you know.
I'm looking more.
So I mean, making predictions is difficult, too.
I think that, you know, GWI in particular did a good job of cleaning this stuff up. My issue is though, you can clean it up once, as long as those processes are being followed, then the cleanup can, it's not cleaning up going forward. So you're pretty confident, what got cleaned up in '24, which was brought to your attention by Alice and the finance people, correct, in terms of those adjustments? So the only adjustments that you're making are for '24, not for '25, correct?
Correct, correct.
Right, and I think you also mentioned that the procedures that Deborah has documented that the staff is now following will also be extremely helpful. Okay.
Yes, Laura? So on your opinion, on page three, it says, "Management should improve internal controls over year-end financial reporting by strengthening review and reconciliation processes to ensure balances are complete and accurate. Staff responsible for closing and financial reporting should receive additional training on project fund accounting. Complex or unusual transactions should be reviewed by appropriately qualified personnel." So I know the League of Municipalities has additional accounting training. As an audit firm, you say, you know, it would be good for us to get additional training. Do you think the League's training is something we should look at, or what type of training?
Yeah, I think, I don't normally recommend the training, so that's why I'm kind of hesitating. But if you guys need any, I can, I can quickly find some sources and reach out to other municipalities if you guys need a recommendation.
Okay, all right. All right, okay, thank you. And just to close that out, though, I think a lot of what was discussed there was the fact that we did not, until Deborah Mack started working with us, we did not create new projects, new accounting processes for the, all the big projects that we have. Like, we didn't have, you know, I'll just say Fund IV, or, you know what I'm saying? Like, all of that wasn't spelled out. It was just all lumped in.
Right, no, my issue is just general accounting controls, okay? That the right sign-offs are on them, that those type of things. You know, I think that Deborah's put in that type of system. I just want to make sure that that system exists if, you know, the old, she gets hit by a car, do we still have those processes in place? And I think that, you know, that then will become the finance officer's obligation to the board. That's why I was just looking more for the documentation of process.
Mike County, any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Beth, did you want to, did you want to say something?
I was, one thing for Lee is, one thing I think was critical, and that I think you mean about the year-end closing and somebody reviewing, is that what Deborah Mack found is that there was $7.5 million worth of DEQ money spent on FEMA projects. And so somebody had reviewed that at year-end, the auditor missed it before you, whoever was the finance officer missed it. So I think that's really critical for Commissioner Grant and mayor and council members, is that somebody reviewing that and understanding that those grant monies, while there was no money missing, and the cash in total was there, DEQ could have asked for the whole $10 million back. So the $7.5 million adjustment that she made from one fund to the other in passing cash is, I think, part of that critical piece you're talking about of having somebody at year-end understanding those financials and where the monies should be.
And just to follow up on that, that was within '25. That was not, when she made the adjustment, it was in the year that was occurring. You came in, the stuff going back in '24 was the adjustment that you made. We didn't need to make an adjustment to the '25 because it'd already been made by Deborah Mack, is the point, right?
Yeah, and page 54, the beach maintenance project fund, you can see the way the detail is broken out. It's much, much improved over prior year.
I'm very aware of that issue, because I worked with Deborah on that, because I didn't, that's the one we tried to track for two years and got cleaned up this year, so she didn't get it done.
You're welcome. I mean, I think, I think that's it. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Yes, have a good day.
All right, we're going to move on to our coastal engineer update from Fran Way.
Hello, hello? I'm Fran Way. I'm a coastal engineer with Applied Technology Management ATM. We've been working with the town on various coastal projects since 2017. First slide, Ricky. Just an overview of the town. We have five phases of shoreline. New River Inlet, Phase 1 is up near New River Inlet. We have Phase 5 at the Surf City Town Limit. As you can see, there's, these are just an overview of projects that have happened recently or are planned. We have, you know, some of the ones down on the south end were completed and recently completed, and they've been holding up well. And we're working on some of the projects in Phases 1, 2, and 3 right now. And we'll just go into each one individually really quickly, okay? This was the Core Navigation Project. This was last February. They do these about every other year. They usually try to put about 100,000 cubic yards of material on the beach. This is really a dredging project, so it's a beneficial use. The state and Wilmington District of the Army Corps of Engineers, they work on this. In the spring, there should be another meeting, and I attend all the meetings with the state and the Wilmington District and to see, and the plans for coming up for next year, they should be out this spring, and I'll update you as soon as I hear something. Next slide. This is the Phase 5 down on the south end. The, this was completed about two years ago. The project has held up really well. It's a beach and a dune project nourishment. These are just some photos in the lower right from last month. And the beach has been holding up well to some of the recent storm surge events and nor'easters. Next slide. Here's the Phase 4. This is just, you know, as soon as you get onto the island, you know, head south. And that's, this just got completed last year. It's held up really well, too. It's that, it's that Upland Truck Hall sand. There's obviously, the dredging sand is a very good alternative as well. For the, but this material is slightly coarser, and it does, and it's all beach compatible, but it does hold a little bit better, and it has been performing well. Next slide. Oh, and these are just some more photos of the Phase 4 and just, you know, from last month. And you can go again, Ricky. This is the disposal area 143. This is the next major. This is the largest nourishment ever for North Topsail Beach, as you can see. This is for about 2 million cubic yards of material. The biggest nourishment ever was about that $1.5 million in 2015 with, in Phase 5 to establish that engineered beach. So this is a really big one, and it's, you know, a beneficial reuse of the dredge material in that disposal area 143 that's been used, you know, for decades. And they were putting beach-compatible material in there. And so we just really want to get that beach-compatible material out of there, then onto the beach that is eligible for grants and other sort of funding sources. And so that is a big deal with, with these large projects where some sort of additional state or federal funding is really needed for the town to make these happen. And then there's still, there's some easement issues with the state agencies, and TI Coastal's working through those right now. But, you know, this is still planned to occur, you know, a year from now about.
Hey, Fran?
Yes.
Do you know if Chris has any updates as to when he thinks the permit process would be completed?
No, I, the first step was just to get all the easements in order. And then, and he did, the one-stop pre-op meeting did, the agencies are aware of this project, the permit, but the official permit application is not going to get submitted until the easements are all sorted out. And then hopefully, they can turn it around in, you know, three or four months. Yes, go ahead.
I was going to wait till the end. Shallow draft fund. When do we apply for those funds? Is it after you get permits? Is it?
Yes.
That's the money we're looking for.
Right, right, right. I can, I can double-check on that. I will. I think you can go in beforehand, but I do think the permit has to be, yes, in processing, like, near completion. And then that's actually a good thing, because then you can almost put a little pressure on the agencies to finish up their review. So, but I will look into that.
Yeah, it would be helpful to know if it has to be shovel-ready, or as Rick just asked if we can.
Yes, right. I, yes, I do think it should be, you know, in review. And I, but I will double-check on that.
And Fran, another, another point on the discussion here is the shallow draft fund did not receive any state, additional state. the shallow draft fund did not receive any state, additional state funding this year. So it's got its balance, carryover balance of about $66 million. And we want to get our project in there under that $66 million before some other community on the coast is going out for that money as well. Because it's going to be a while until the shallow draft fund really recovers from the money that's being diverted to western North Carolina for Hurricane Helene recovery. So it's really important that we apply as soon as we can to that fund.
Yeah, but Mike, Mike makes an excellent point, because the, the other problem with that is actually, they, they updated, and so there's like 70 million in there, but if we're asking for 35, to your point, you better get in early. And we're also talking about, we'll talk about the second session, about working with Azara to see if we can get some separate funding on this thing. Because to Mike's point, we don't want to wait to try to get that money, because it could be gone. And I think they only fund 20 million a year, even when they're funding it, right, Mike? It's not much.
I just was trying to get one comment.
Sure.
Which I was appreciating that you put the pictures of the beach grasses, because in Phase Four and Five, that project really did help hold those dunes. And the beach grasses, you know, three, four years in now are looking amazing there, so.
Okay, next slide, Ricky. This is potential tropical cyclone eight, this happened last September. It wasn't a tropical storm, it never reached that status, it never reached hurricane status. But it did qualify, the FEMA comes in and does their, you know, their county-wide damage assessment for these major storms, and then obviously the, the governor also has to declare a state of emergency. It, it all qualified for this. This is a smaller project, it's only about 60,000 cubic yards of material, but it is a dune restoration, and it's, you know, just as soon as you get on the island north, and then, we're gonna try to, and then definitely north of the pier is, is, you know, where we're going to, you know, concentrate on. And then, you can, next slide, Ricky? Yeah, in, uh, last May, April, May, we did actually have to plug some dunes up there, that there were, there was basically no dune. And as, you know, we mentioned before, you know, county, even right now out there, there, there's ponding on the, on New River Inlet Road. Uh, and then with the no dune, then you get that saltwater and tides up there, and then a lot of ponding on New River Inlet Road. These, uh, the, the 8,000 cubic yard critical dune restoration, it, it worked well, and, you know, those, those dune sections did hold up to the recent storms and everything, so that is good. We're gonna come back and do more of this, all up and down, uh, the, the, the oceanfront here, pretty much as soon as you get onto the island north. And that's what we're doing a month from now. Next slide, Ricky? Uh, this is the, the project that will be happening next month, we'll be getting. It, you know, you can see, as soon as you get onto the island, there's the Jeffries Access, and then we've got up to the pier, there will be about one-third of the project, and about two-thirds of the project will occur north of the pier, up to the Topsail Reef condos. The Topsail Reef condos are, are, you know, separate, they, they, they're all, uh, they didn't qualify. We have to do a section-by-section analysis by FEMA to see what survives a five-year storm, and their structure survives a five-year storm, so we couldn't include them. But this is a project that will be happening, it'll be, it'll be another truck haul, and it'll be that good sand. This will be a little more difficult, because there are, you know, when we're doing this dune project, we are getting closer to walkovers and piers and, and just decks, really. So it, we do have to be a little bit more careful, but this will happen, you know, next month, it'll begin next month after Christmas and New Year's. And next one? And this is just a, a, a summary of kind of where we are. The New River Inlet Management Master Plan, EIS, that is the, basically everyone kind of refers to it as the terminal groin project that has moved forward, but with the, the government shutdown and everything, it did, did slow it down. The draft EIS is still under review, that's the main section of the EIS, but then there are appendices that are also, there's numerous appendices in these EIS documents, they're humongous. And, and the biological assessment, the BA, and the essential fish habitat are being worked on, and they are appendices, and Dial Court is working on them now. Then PTC Eight, we're working, that, that project is, is going to happen here about a month from now. And DA 143 was easement coordination, the, and then we have several of the projects completed that we already went through. And then we're just gonna continue working with staff on funding and accounting and all the submittals to FEMA after the fact, and even for the state grant, and then just permitting coordination on all projects as necessary. And that, that's the, that's my presentation.
Thank you, Fran.
Fran, I do have a, a comment on the potential tropical cyclone number eight work. Just to remind everybody, the, the town committed about $3 million for that recovery effort. Whether or not we get freedom of reimbursement, we don't know yet, but we committed that money. And since that time, this past year, we had a pretty strong nor'easter last few weeks. That did a lot of erosion at the very north end along what I call Condo Road. I think would be a good idea for those condominium homeowner associations to consider, if it's possible, to add additional monies to our project so that we could put additional sand in front of those condominiums from the Topsail Dunes all the way up through the St. Regis. It would, I think, really benefit, because I know that the amount of sand that's gonna be coming in with the 55,000 cubic yards you're talking about, Fran, is not gonna replace what was eliminated in that nor'easter that occurred last month. So it's something for the, those condominium homeowners to think about if it's possible to add to our project. Thank you.
Connie, anything? You good?
Thank you, Fran.
Thank you, Fran.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna move into the next section, which is the beginning of the organizational meeting, and for farewell remarks, I believe that would be myself. And Alderman Benson, would you like to go first?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank all of you for attending, one of our biggest crowds in the past year. Congratulations to Mayor-elect Rick Grant and the other new aldermen that were elected. Rick is our new captain. Please don't run aground of the ship. Seriously. Neither rain, snow, ice, or hurricane has kept me from reporting to you. For those of you keeping track, this is my 96th straight alderman's report, and sadly, my last report. I'd like to take a New York minute to recap those last 95 reports and some of the major accomplishments over those corresponding eight years. Our revenues have continued to grow while keeping expenses in check as investors and retirees see North Topsail Beach as a prime vacation and retirement community on the east coast. And as our audit report showed, we are in great financial position. We survived several hurricanes, restored infrastructure, and the eroded beach afterwards. We established a capital improvement fund for future major expenses. This resulted in purchase of a new fire engine, renovation of the north fire station, and construction of the new south end fire station. We established the Beach Inlet Advisory Committee to plan for future beach nourishment. This resulted in a plan with a $10.5 million state grant that nourished Phase Four last year. We now have a five-year plan in place, as Fran pointed out, to nourish the five file, five miles of town. For those of you in the Cobra Zone, we now have support from US Fish and Wildlife to help get the legislation through both chambers of Congress and end the CBR penalty. We really cannot thank Mayor Pro Tem Tom Leonard enough. He has made that a major effort, goal of his. He has worked dedicatedly over the last eight, 10 years to make this happen. And even though he's not in the Cobra Zone, he has worked diligently, making three trips to testify before Congress and meet with the new director of Fish and Wildlife. And I think this last meeting was the one that's gonna get us over the top, because now Fish and Wildlife is gonna work with the town to create that error that was made back in 1982. I'd like to thank my current and former colleagues on the board for their efforts in making North Topsail Beach the vacation destination that it is. And finally, a big thank you to Town Manager Arosterian, who has been effective manager, getting the big projects done, as well still taking care of the day-to-day operations of the town. Thank you, Alice. It's been my pleasure serving you, residents and property owners of North Topsail Beach. Let's continue the progress. Thank you.
Mine is not nearly as long, so, no, most of you won't be surprised at that. So I want to thank everybody for coming today as well. I have been on the board, serving the town residents here for the last 10 years. I started as an alderman, I was an alderman for four years, and then I was the mayor for six years. Partnering with our board and our staff, I certainly feel that we've accomplished a lot, and I think, Mike, you did a good job in listing out a lot of those board accomplishments. And I do look at the accomplishments as a board. I don't think any of us look at them as individual accomplishments. I have confidence that our newly-elected board will continue down that same path. We will, they will continue to put residents first, ensuring a safe place to enjoy for many years to come. They will, there will always be challenges, but working together, they will continue to overcome them as we have in the past 10 years. So thank you to staff, thank you to the board, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Joanne, you did mention the one thing that you did not accomplish as mayor.
For what?
Instead of two, you'd still be here. Remember, we talked about having a four-year term for the mayor.
Yeah, I'd still be here.
You'd still be here.
We didn't get to do that. Because my husband's here to make sure that I am actually turning over the gavel. All right, thank you. So do you want to take a break, so that we can get the new? So we're gonna take a quick break, so the newly-elected officials will be able to come up and get sworn in and seated.
So for me or for you?
For me.
All right.
Repeat after me.
Do I have to go ahead and apply?
Yes. I, Richard Grant.
I, Richard Grant.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
Let's go slower on that. And I endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as mayor for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
Thank you. Mr. Strother?
Yes. Can I? Yes. OS, can we have an S on the end of my name?
I can add one if you'd like. Okay, so I'll hold it here for both of us. Repeat after me with your hand up. I, Larry Strother.
I, Larry Strother.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government.
Thereof.
Thereof.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for the town for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for the town for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
Thank you. Mr. Barefoot. Thank you. I'm going to hold it for. Repeat after me. I, Mark Barefoot.
I, Mark Barefoot.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
Beautiful, thank you. Thank you. You were looking to the spot.
I, Kip Malcolm.
I, Kip Malcolm.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Do solemnly swear, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support and the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
Beautiful, thank you. Thank you. You were looking to the spot.
I brought my child with five, so my mother's going to hold it for me.
All right, so. I, Kip Malcolm.
I, Kip Malcolm.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Do solemnly swear, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support and the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof. That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
Beautiful, thank you. Thank you. You were looking to the spot.
I, Kip Malcolm.
I, Kip Malcolm.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Do solemnly swear, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support and the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
Beautiful, thank you. Thank you. You were looking to the spot.
I, Kip Malcolm.
I, Kip Malcolm.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
Do solemnly swear, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support and the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state.
That I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and the laws of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as alderman for North Toppsel Beach, so help me God.
All right, just need to say. Thank you.
Okay, next order of business is I need a motion to approve the second part of today's agenda.
Motion to approve?
We'd go motion, then we'd do discussion. So motion approved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So, let's see. It is item E. No, it's not. Let's see. Item D, discussion of electric bikes on the beach. I'm asking that we move that to the January meeting, as Mr. Malcolm has let me know. We've had conversation about some state regulations that are going to affect that and could affect what towns are going to be doing, so we would like to let the state rule on that first, so that anything we talk about would be in line with that. So if we can remove that item?
Yeah, I think procedurally, counsel.
So I'm going to make a motion to remove that item.
Yeah, that's what you need, yep.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Under, under the consent agenda, I'd like to pull off the Finance Department, just because I've got a couple of questions to ask. So I need a motion.
Well, can I make a motion? Actually, can we pull all of the department heads that are present, so that they can present publicly their reports? So I make a motion to pull item B from the consent agenda, the department head reports.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, next order of business is certificates of appreciation. So I don't think, oh, Mike's still here. Is Joanne still here?
She's still.
Okay, what we can do, Mike?
The election.
Right. I guess, I guess we can do the election of pro tem mayor first. It does, I think we've just got one person, so that's fine. So I'd like to hear a, a motion to approve, I guess it'll be nominate a mayor pro tem.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Connie as mayor pro tem.
Aye.
Any other nominations? Okay, so now we need a motion to approve her as mayor pro tem.
You nominated her, so no.
All right, so now I'll make a motion.
To approve her.
To approve Connie as mayor pro tem.
Do I hear a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So then, let's move to what we have. We already filled out mayor pro tem. The second one is state and local reps with those. So we'd like to make sure we fill those. Do I hear who would be interested in those? And then reflecting back on the sheet that you've got with current members of different committees, or different ones, so.
With some of my government background, I would like to represent the town with the state and federal issues moving forward.
Okay. Just a comment on that. In the past, we've combined those two, so it's fine to fill it now, but I would suggest when we get together in January, that we give some thought to combining some of these going forward, or separating something like state and federal, or how to coordinate those. And the other thing I'd like to suggest we consider for January is not just having board members as liaisons, or working on some of these committees, but that have actually citizens that might be interested in. The guy that I always talk about is sitting there, Mr. Fontana, and the work that you did with DOT, and those type of things, but to have people involved in these, you know, in these liaison committees, or whatever, going forward. We don't have to decide that today, but I think it would be important to get more citizens involved in these things. Anybody else on state and local? I think you're already involved.
Mayor, if I may, typically, the state and federal liaisons are the mayor and the mayor pro tem for the town of North Toppsel Beach. That's how it's been done in the past. Are you wanting to not abide, well, not abide, it's not the right word, no longer have those seats as dedicated seats for the mayor and mayor pro tem?
Well, what I would suggest, then, is if that's the way we've done it in the past, do that temporarily until January, and then decide that as a group, how we want to handle that. Does that make sense? So we'll, we'll keep that as myself and mayor pro tem, but again, consider that to open it again in January, when we're going over these things. And Alice, I would ask you to weigh in on some of these as we go through them, because we've talked about them. The Army Corps EIS is one, I believe, we need to fill.
Yes.
You want to weigh in on that a little bit?
That is critical at this point.
Yeah. For the new members, I've asked Alice, and she's the one that's the expert in these type of things, to get people to understand what they're signing up for, which for the new guys, or new people, it's probably not clear what some of these are, so.
Sure. Yeah, at the last board meeting, I gave a brief update on the draft EIS and the process that we were moving forward with. And it was critical, we approved the agreement with Dow Cordy Associates to keep the engineering services going while the federal government was shut down. Obviously, they have reopened. We have been communicating again actively within the last week with the Army Corps, so this committee is critical to fill at this point in time, so that we keep things moving, to get the, the draft EIS out on time.
So, do we have interest for that committee?
Yeah, I would also be interested in the Army Corps' EIS committee.
Okay. I lost my copy of the yellow one.
So we're all going to do a few?
We're only going to do a few. Yeah, right now, we have on that one, the mayor and mayor pro tem are on the US, so right now, we would have one person. Is that something you would like?
Is that what you're looking for?
This, yeah, this, this one. So right now, on that, we have, we have the mayor and mayor pro tem.
Correct.
So both of those spots are open, so we have one person that's interested in that one. Anybody else have interest? And again, you can think about it until January, but I think we need to have at least one person available on that today, or would you recommend we do both?
I would recommend both, and for this one in particular, I would recommend, if you're going to have one newer member, to have one with that's older, that has the historical knowledge. Either one. It'll help.
Do you want to do that? Well, the other one was pro tem before, so Connie and, and Kip? Okay. All right, CRC? Alice, you want to give them an idea?
Sure. In the past, this is beach-related typically. It's a meeting that this person would attend quarterly in a state, and there's not a lot of involvement, but usually a quarterly meeting.
Okay, and right, right now, inconsistent with the other one, right now, myself and, and Connie are the two people? If you want to do that, I'm fine with that.
Last year, you did, last year, you assigned alternates, which you haven't done in the past. Before, you assigned one member, but last year, you felt it was valuable to have one as a backup, as an alternate, so something you can decide.
Do you want to, you guys, but you, how about temporarily, since you're already on it? You'll replace me on it, and it'll be the two of you? Does that work?
Connie and Connie.
Okay. TISP C. Larry, anybody interested in that one?
Yes. I'd be, I have, I am now the, currently am the vice chair on the test pack, and so I'd like to continue to work on that, that project.
Anybody else want to serve on that?
So, at this moment, Alderman Strother serves in a citizen capacity.
Right.
Which you're able to continue to serve on, so that would still leave the two.
Right, and I would, I would put him as our representative, and not.
As a citizen representative?
Correct. Replace him as citizen and put him on.
Okay.
Larry, I assume that's what you wanted?
Yes.
So then, we could have one other person here, and then.
A citizen.
A citizen that would be interested in doing, or replacing Larry on that. So anybody that's interested in that, please let us know, and we can do that citizen in.
January.
Can we do that? We have to have the 45-day notice?
There's a 45-day requirement for the policy to advertise a vacancy.
Okay, so can we advertise that one? And we'll leave it vacant until that, that period comes? And I believe citizens are able to attend those meetings anyway, correct? They're not closed to the public. So I would say anybody interested in that fill would, might want to go and attend the meeting as well.
Where are those meetings typically, so people know?
They're at Surf City, the town of Surf City's meeting, meeting area, and it's usually twice, every, every two months.
Okay.
So you sit, we meet six times a year, unless there's a special meeting.
Okay, and we might want to just let people know, so you'll be the town's representative, not the citizen representative, and then we'll have one more to fill in January?
Yeah, Larry and I had a discussion about this, and I think it would definitely
We currently had myself as a citizen representative and mayor pro tem. Leonard was there as a member and Mike.
So you'll be the member. So then we'll have another member to fill, because they're not going to meet again until after our next meeting, correct?
We're actually, we're going to meet next week. We'll meet December the 11th.
All right, so you'll be there for that one. And then anybody that's interested in.
December 16th.
December the 11th for Tispac.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not BISAC.
No, it's Tispac.
Too many, too many names. All right. Just BISAC. And the only other one is BISAC. And currently, you're the chairman of that, but not as a board member. And you're, right now, it's myself and Mike representing the board and you heading it up as a citizen. I'm assuming you would like to stay as the chairman, but be the board member?
I would definitely appreciate being able to serve, continue to serve as the chairman since we're right in the middle of things that we've been working on. Of course, there's an election, there is an election that will take place in February, based on the rules. But I mean, but currently, I'd like to stay the chairman and then.
But as our board representative, not as a citizen?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and then that would, then we need one more alderman person or yourself that's going to.
And the citizen to replace you too.
That's right.
Okay, so I don't mind staying on it until January and then if other people want to get involved in it, that's fine. But then if I need to get off, that's fine.
Okay, well.
And then again, let's go ahead and notice the 45 days for filling your spot.
For the citizen.
For the citizen job. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We're just doing this by consensus. Chip, I'm assuming we don't need to do anything on these except by consensus?
Okay.
Okay. And that's, the rest is January, yeah. And so what I would suggest you do, and I think Connie would probably be a good one for this too, although I'm not trying to volunteer her. But with Alice, when you're looking at these, Mark or, you know, Kip or Larry, have a discussion with her. Because I've been asked, when people sign up for stuff, the first question I'm always asked is how much time does this involve? And then I come back with my standard answer is it depends how much time you want to spend on it. So it's just something to think.
Several of the committees as both a citizen and as a board member. So if you have any questions, I can try to help you.
I mean, she's a logical one, but I didn't want to dump it on you, so mayor pro tem. With that, let's move on to. So we're clear on the other ones being vacated. We're fine on that, correct? Okay, so Alice?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. Staffing updates. I want to first say congratulations to Kim Weaver, our deputy finance officer, who is recently retired. I want to thank you for her 18 years of service with the town. Most recently, like I said, she was a deputy finance director, but has served in other capacities as well. Kim's last day was November 26th. She was presented with a plaque for her years of service as well as some other mementos from everyone. And we just wish her all the best in her next chapter. Included on today's agenda also is under new business is an agreement with accompanying contract authorization ordinance to enter into an agreement with a staffing agency to assist in finance department. I reported in previous meetings that we have been interviewing and testing to fill the accountant one position that the board had approved. This position has not been filled as of yet. We continue to interview and test as candidates apply. But this agreement will provide immediate assistance to the finance department and also will provide a temporary to hire option that's outlined in the agreement. Individuals are vetted and tested through this agency and sure the board approve. We have someone available to start immediately. And that is included on today's agenda under new business coming up later on. Potential tropical cyclone eight, Fran reported on that to some extent. PTC number eight work will resume, we expect, with ST Wooton continuing operations the first week of January. That's when they will mobilize and start. The project's expected to take three months max to complete that remaining dune work. Also, as an update, it still remains within FEMA waiting to be obligated with funds. GFL cart changeouts. I've been reporting that GFL would be changing out trash and recycling carts. Recycling carts in the November timeframe is part of the new contract that was approved back in April of 2025. We pushed the new cart rollouts until the off-season because it just did not make sense logistically to have carts being maneuvered in and out and trucks coming on and off the island during a busy time of year. GFL will begin swapping these carts out on Wednesday this week, which is December 3rd. Each resident will receive a new trash and recycling cart and the existing carts will be removed. Whether they have one or multiple, they're all going to be changed out. So it's just not one trash, one recycling. It's whatever carts you've got, they will be swapped out. We have met with GFL to discuss the logistics of the process and have been communicating the process for this week, which I, again, it will take place on Wednesday. I do want to say thank you to Holly Ridge, the town of Holly Ridge, for being so kind to assist us with allowing us to use their facility for cart storage. As we met with GFL, they looked at various sites here, but it's just too problematic between Driftery's Lot with the ground being unstable, with it's not paved. The park is definitely not an option. I do not want to take up any space in our park, even though that does have an asphalt surface. It just, it just makes more sense if it could be stored off-island. So we're thankful to them. We anticipate completing the project on Wednesday, December 10th. So they will be working daily excluding Sundays to do this cart swap out. So as we get information, it'll be posted on our website and to Facebook as we proceed. Iwork Citizen Request Platform. In 2024, we entered into an agreement with Iwork Software. And part of this initiative is a citizens report portal. I initially rolled this out for beach patrol usage to pin and document items. These are personal property items that are removed from the beach during the summer months and also document citizen interactions. So it lets us know where our hotspots are, where we have more issues. The second phase of the implementation was for Public Works to start using internally. This was for a work order system. Initially, Public Works didn't have any type of platform they were using to track work orders. So they have been using it and been very successful at implementing that and have done a great job. So now we are rolling out the next phase of this program, which is the public portal to allow citizens to submit issues. This also includes being able to upload photos and locations to drop pins to know exactly where something is. If it's a sign, it's a crossover, a dead animal, whatever it may be. You can put in the information, drop the pin of your location and upload a picture.
So Alice, before you leave that one, but this is not for police activity or somebody sees a problem that is for fire and safety, is that correct?
No, this is not for emergency services. And that's, I have that later, I'm just going to capture that later on at the end. But it's not for emergency services, for fire, police. You still need to call 911 for those type of situations. But this does, we envision it to most workly with Public Works. But it will also capture any other requests such as the 411 system that we currently use, that the town has used for years. This will just replace that. So whenever someone is requesting something for Public Works, it'll be clear what you're requesting for. Anything else, there's an option to select other. We have went through and built a tutorial, which was published on the website yesterday. And it walks step through step to take somebody through from start to finish on how to submit anything through this portal. We have scheduled later up today to roll out an announced, public announcement announcing this. But the tutorial is already built onto the website and was there as of yesterday.
So basically, you're creating a punch list.
Yes, yes, and a work order system. So this is going to be crucial for the board down the road for any, to determine and justify any needs that are specifically within the Public Works Department. If we need to expand services, you're going to have the data to back up whatever requests that we may be coming to you with. And also tracks labor, it tracks everything. So when they submit a work order and they put the information in, it calculates how much labor was used, how much the parts were, everything. So you're getting a holistic picture of what a request is.
So would that tie in then to budget requests?
Yes.
So like the snowflake project, we might be able to track hours or whatever against that?
You'll know how much time that was spent responding to snowflakes being out and how much it costs to replace them and so forth, yes.
Well, that's great because that's what we need to start building the budget more accurately, is being able to track some costs.
Yep. Okay, stormwater projects for Island Drive and Richard Peters Park. I've been working with our engineers to finalize the designs to get the two stormwater projects ready for bid. Again, these are on Island Drive and Richard Peters Park. The final construction documents are now being finalized and have secured the encroachment agreement for the New River Inlet Road Site with the Island Drive site still pending with the DOT. So one we have secured, one is pending. These two projects were for a grant that I wrote and secured in 2023, executed in June of 2024 with the North Carolina Department of Public Safety, specifically the Division of Emergency Management. And that was for $1,261,607. We've been submitting required reports quarterly and being reimbursed for payments, which is 100% to this point been for engineering to WK Dixon, now referred to as Ordora.
Okay, so the number is, it's a reimbursement project?
Correct, yes, which is typical.
So they didn't say that they can't, that's typical for them.
No, which is typical for most grants. The Phase Four project was highly unusual. And the Phase Four project, even in the contract agreements, if you read those, says it was supposed to be a reimbursement. So yes, that was just a highly unusual situation that evolved. To date, we have expended $112,478 on engineering costs. We have a purchase order that's already been encumbered and we've got $90,000 left on that. So that gives you an idea how much was planned for the engineering part to get it to bid. So we still have funds available to complete that out for the, through December. I am asking consensus from the board to move forward with bidding these projects so that once all the documents are finalized this month, I can go straight up to bid, advertise for a January bid opening. My intention is to bid the project out while waiting for the second encroachment agreement that I just mentioned with the DOT and notify bidders that the agreement is pending.
Do you want to get that consensus now?
Yes.
So is that the consensus of the board? Nope, just consensus because we're not contracting.
You're not approving a contract, but I just want to make sure that this is still something, a priority of the town and the board.
Yes. Something that's funded 100% by somebody else is a very good project.
All in favor?
Yeah, all good? Okay, thank you, Alice.
Okay, thank you. WK Dixon, now known as Ordora, like I mentioned, has been under contract to assist through the bidding phase, which they've done a really great job on. I've asked them also to provide a new proposal to handle construction administration and observation. I envision this to aid in preparing the construction contracts, review drawings, electrical components, pumps, infiltration systems, just for consistency with the contract documents. And also inspect the critical components and installations. The grant was written, when I prepared it, to include the engineer's opinion of cost for construction plus a 5% inflation cost built in. So the grant was written with anticipating finishing out the engineering for the planning process to get to the bidding and then also what the probable cost of that we had estimated, plus 5% for the cost of construction. So that's all included in the grant funds.
So for layman's purposes, Dixon's covered by the grant?
Correct. And we'll know once the bids come in what the actual cost is. And then you can determine from there if you want, if the board chooses to continue to move forward with the projects. Any questions on those?
With that, that's just covering the initial cost as far as maintenance and everything else is going to fall on Public Works in the future, correct?
In the future, yes. Any type of maintenance, yes.
All the pumps, screens, it's a labor intensive.
Something the town will be responsible for.
It's not automatic, labor intensive, thank you.
Yep, correct. And two, and at one point, because we do have a new board, I will have the engineers come to do a full presentation so that you could ask any specific questions you have on both of the engineering solutions because they're both very different in nature. The one for Richard Peters Park, it's more about pervious pavers with tearing out the asphalt to allow for drainage. And then the one on Island Drive and grocery is a little more sophisticated with adding pipe and an infiltration system. So I think it'll be good to, for the board, to be able to look at the engineering and ask any questions once we get the bids in.
That's not the same thing that Surf City did, is it? They had a stormwater project down there.
They did do one, the same one, because we all went through the same study that was grant-funded as well before we did this grant with the RCCP process. And WK Dixon recommended that, the one project like we're looking at on Island Drive, which has worked in Surf City, yes. Yep. Okay. Just a quick update on the pier behind the fire station because I have received some inquiries on that project. The contract with RCP Marine is expected to be finalized this week with construction to start right after it's signed and expected to be completed within three weeks.
Alice, how big of a pier is this?
It's the same. It's just.
Just that same?
Yeah, it's just fixing what is there.
So we're replacing in kind?
The only thing that we're adding is we've, we originally had budgeted, if you recall, a potential landing at Richard Peters Park at one of the piers for our fire department to be able to have closer access than here at the bridge. So when the board approved this, it just made much more sense to take that idea and move it there because it's closer to, closer to the fire station number one, right behind their property, and closer to the north end for access. So just better all access overall. So it is putting in a gate and a landing, so to speak, just for them to get into the water with their equipment. That's the only add-on.
Real quick with that. As far as timeframe, you know, it's three weeks after it's been signed, but with the holidays and everything else, estimate before January, the end of January, basically?
Yeah, I would say, and you never know with contractors.
Absolutely, I understand, 100%.
But that is the information that we've got back from the contractor. So that's what they're saying is three weeks. I would probably, you know, estimate with the holidays, just like you said. It may take a little bit of time. But the good part is that we're in the off-season. So now is the time to do these type of projects.
Thank you.
Okay, crosswalks has been another question that we've been receiving. Staff has been asked to provide an update at the January meeting. So there will be an update on crosswalks in January.
That'll include the feedback from DOT, right? Because they still have to sign off on these.
Correct, correct.
Every state road, they do, absolutely.
Yes, there has to be agreements in place with the DOT for any crosswalks that are in place.
On theirs, we can't.
And just like Mr. Barefoot mentioned about maintenance, we will be required for maintenance going forward on any agreement with DOT on a state road with crosswalks. So we're responsible, just like the one at Villa Capriani. We installed it and we're responsible for maintenance going forward.
So the board had already come up with a list of priorities, right? For Public Works for these crosswalks? Or is Public Works bringing us their list?
No, we've already established the priorities. We're just going to give an update because you mentioned that in the last meeting that was provided that there was some potential funding available and touching base with DOT. So it's just coming back with what that plan is going to look like. And if the board is still, is still comfortable with moving forward or if there's any other input that we need to pivot on with a new board as well.
And if you remember, two things we talked about were we don't necessarily want to put the same thing everywhere that we put in a villa.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, there was multiple types of installations that our Public Works Director outlined. Some of it include, most of it actually included signage or just the striping with the thermoplastic that they put down on the roadways.
And then, and then the other caveat was what DOT will approve, so that if they come back and they're willing to approve A, B, and C versus D, E, and F, that, that priority may switch, because we may not be able to get the approvals that quickly.
Right.
It took a long time to get Villa done.
And it took a long time to get to the agreement in place with the DOT the last time. Okay, events. I just want to say thank you to everyone that participated and came out to our fourth annual Christmas tree lighting. Um it was a great event. Each year it continues to grow since we started it, so that's always a good thing to see and a, and a happy, happy occasion. I want to thank all the staff who helped set up the event. Um it does take, a lot goes into it, so I appreciate everything that everyone does to make it a success. Uh also, thank you to our partners, the Presbyterian Church Choirs, the Children's Choir and the Adult Choirs. They did uh a great job as always. Um the Girl Scout troops, number four-two-nine-eight and two-oh-three, we had two this year. Usually have one. We had one more troop that helped with serving the hot cocoa and cookies, so thank you to them. And the Cameron Beasley Sea Turtle Hospital. And also a reminder for this holiday season that the community pantry is um at Town Hall on the property for anyone that wants to drop off any non-perishable items during this season. It's greatly appreciated. Um and it's, the pantry is on-site year-round as well, so not just this time of year, but I just wanted to make a note of that.
Alice, you know, um and they happen to be ladies, ladies that sit out here on Saturday on turnover day, are they still going to be out there as well during this time of year?
No, um usually what happens, if it starts to become uh overly full, I will contact share the table and then coordinate a pickup with them so that they come and take it and, and then it gets replenished. So it's, it's being rotated uh continually.
Just a reminder too, we do have a little free library out there.
Yes.
On the front porch too, so if somebody's looking for a book to read on this rainy day, we do have that as well as the food pantry.
Yeah, and the next initiative um that I'll be working on um this week, we'll, I'll be sending out a notice about the Santa, Santa mail as well. Um where you can drop off, there's a mailbox in the lobby for letters to Santa, so anyone that did not give their letters to Santa while he was here for the tree lighting, you could bring them to Town Hall and drop them in the box at the lobby.
Great, uh next item is open forum, Alexis.
Actually, Alice, if I can address two things. When talking about the uh account one position, I did not see it on the town website. Um I didn't see it on the government jobs website either. I did see it on the League of Municipalities though, so I don't know.
So it was posted, um it needs to be reposted. So you can set them up for a certain amount of time to show and then it'll close out. That's when uh myself and the finance director, as well as G W I, Deborah Mack, um reviewed the applicants. So it just has to be
Okay.
um republished essentially each time it expires.
The League of Municipalities had it December sixth of the expiration, so that's why I just didn't know.
Yeah, they're, they're um, they're terms for how long they have it is different from like Gov Deal, or not Gov Deals, GovJobs.com and um like our website.
Perfect, thank you. And then?
The intention too is to continue to advertise a petition internally. Um so in case somebody does apply that's uh be, that um is well qualified and tests well, um it'll also give us an opportunity too, and if this uh person, particular person is uh working out, we may come back to the board at one point to um, you know, to potentially um increase um the staffing within the finance department. Um if we, if we have two really good candidates.
Right, and I know we'll get to that a little later in the agenda as well. I didn't want to belabor it, I just looked briefly.
So internally, you mean we're just going to post it on our website, when you say internally?
Yes.
And then with the trash cans uh that are being replaced, I know you would correspond with some of our community members. If the trash cans are visible from the street, they will go get them as long as they're not impeding?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, yes. Um that was one thing that we talked about when we were talking about the logistics of how this was going to work, because we do have a lot of uh property owners that um are not present during this, this time. If they are visible on the property, they will walk um on the property and get the carts. Um now they're not going to, you know, try to open up any doors, or if there's a service yard, they're not going to try to, you know, go around a house searching, but if it is clearly visible uh from the roadway, they are um, they are agreeable to go and get those, retrieve those cans.
And then obviously, we put the trash cans out on Wednesday. It'll take a week, up to a week. No penalties or fines for leaving trash cans out.
No, no, yeah, no. Code enforcement has been advised to stand down during this time, yes.
Great, any other questions or comments? So now, open forum.
There were no signups.
Anybody wish to speak? Please identify yourself and your address.
Uh my name's Frank Rochelle.
Is it working?
Yep.
Frank Rochelle, I am a property owner, Rogers Bay Camp Real. Also a longtime county resident. I've owned property at Rogers Bay for thirty years. And for all of my friends at Rogers Bay that's watching this, I am not here to make any complaints whatsoever. I have concerns. Nothing to do with Rogers Bay, however, and I'm sure I'm disappointing a lot of people. For years, I've been coming down here, our crossover right in front of Rogers Bay, this Jeffries property. We've asked or been mentioned several times about a handicap ramp there. You know what I'm talking about. And thirty years ago, I could get up and down those steps very easily with my fishing gear. At seventy-seven, it's a little harder. And um I guess, a request, would you please look into the possibilities of doing that? Excuse me. But uh my father-in-law passed away probably ten years ago, and he could, got where you could not get across those steps. And a lot of people my age, you have problems with uh neuropathy and stuff, which I do have. So please uh look into that, visit that and see if it's a possibility. I know y'all are in charge of that crossover now. Uh but I know there'd be some involvement as far as gaining, I guess, more area to put it up there. Another thing which I've been adamant about many years is the speed limit going through there. I brought it to everybody that tensions. I got involved with DOT ten years ago, five, six, maybe seven or eight years ago. They did a study. They came back and told me that, I guess, basically what it came down to, there hadn't been enough wrecks or people hurt bad enough. However, I know for a fact that they lowered the speed limit there to thirty-five for a period of time. Now, a few years ago, there was a sign there, it lowered to thirty-five. And now I think it's still forty-five if I'm not mistaken. I've sit on my deck, which is right in the front, I've watched at least two bad accidents. I saw a golf cart with kids almost got hit, get, get hit there. So I know that there's discussion about the traffic slowing down, but I think that's worth revisiting. And uh I've got emails from the DOT and I know, I've talked to Chief Unginger. And he don't remember and that there was a sign that it was reduced and, and evidently it was done by mistake, but there was a sign that the DOT did reduce the speed limit. Please just um check into that.
Sounds like I asked for a punch list.
I, well, just to, it's just a quick update to um as regards to the beach access across from Rogers Bay, that is one of the accesses that we're already working on. Um we've got cost estimates um to rebuild that one, because it was deemed as one of the ones as a priority with repairs. And, and I have asked that that be uh looked at to make handicap accessible with a ramp. Uh because we've been focusing on New River Inlet Road with the beach access matting. Um we've got the two permitted at the Jeffrey site, and we've got one under permit right now down on Myrtle Drive, so this hopefully will be the first one that we address on, on Island Drive, um because we've been already working on that and getting estimates.
Well, thank you, and I know I've, I've, like I said, during the summertime, that parking lot to add to the problems about the traffic, in the summertime, that parking lot there probably will hold a hundred cars.
Yeah, it's one of our largest parking lots, which so.
And then you got, you got traffic coming from the bar. We've got two entrances there, entrance across the road, you got cars coming and going, and I'm serious, I'll sit there and watch accidents almost happen and and actually watched two of them. That could have been really, really bad, so. But thank you very much and.
Would you turn that off for me?
And congratulations to all you new people, thank you.
Okay, all right. So consent agenda. Um I believe what we moved was to take off the department heads' reports, but not the other parts of that, is that correct, Kip? All right, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
I'll make the motion in a second.
All in favor?
No, it's discussion.
We can ask for discussion, but I, we already had the discussion, we changed it, but if you want to add something to it?
Were we going to pull off H so we could have some discussion?
H, where's H?
That's uh under new business.
Is it that under new business?
Yeah.
That's new business.
All right, perfect.
Thank you.
All right. So now moving on to department head reports. Finance department. So I just had a couple of, a couple of quick questions uh for you. One of the things we're going to be talking about, I think he knows, that's the finance director. You want to introduce yourself again?
Oh, sure. Uh my name's Wayne Johansson. Uh started in the middle of October, I'm the new finance officer.
Right. Just a, a couple of things, and, and we, I brought this up before. Under the, um let me find the right thing here. I had my notes on it before. Under the Capital Beach, Project Beach Maintenance thing, under four, could you do me a favor? We're showing this as against budget, under double I. That is the cumulative amount of investment income, not the investment income this year, so could you break those two out? Because that looks like we're making about fifty percent return, which, which would be great, but obviously we're not. Um I'd brought that up before, because it says it's over budget by a million dollars. It's not, because the budget would have only had interest for four months. And I'm pretty sure we don't have one point three million dollars in interest in three months, in five months. Um and then also, uh two things, and maybe, Alice, have we had a chance to talk to Carter's at all? Are they available at all?
Yes, um I have touched base with Carter's and told them, um explained to them that the board was potentially looking at having them come in to give a proposal um for, um to, to look at the
Forecast.
The forecast for the beach project uh with the thirty million dollar project uh for phases one through three. Um and they said that they would be interested in having more discussions on it to get, um just to learn more exactly what you're looking for, um but felt like they could possibly um assist in giving a five-year, five-year cash forecast.
The genesis behind this is that we've, we've talked about doing the beach project. What we don't have yet is a five-year plan, telling us what those numbers look like going out. And by the way, I did get a commitment from the county that they'll have their planning person come out in January to talk to us a little bit about what, how they put that together. But if we could, maybe take a look at um how we put that together, because I think that's a critical item for us to have uh in terms of what that project looks like. I mean, we've got a lot of cash right now. Um we also have one more debt payment to go and some other things. So if that's something maybe that we could work on the agenda for next time, am I making myself clear on this?
The county coming to, the county planning person coming to?
No, no, all they're, no. Not, not planning person. What I asked them to do is originally, Tim was going to come in and talk about how they put their five-year plan together. Where, there would be a staff person there as to how they put their planning thing together, because I think they.
Are you talking about a strategic plan?
Their strategic plan, I'm sorry, their strategic plan. And that, that would just be a general discussion, it wouldn't be anything, it would not be a big deal for us.
A presentation.
Just a presentation is what it would be.
Okay, so we're looking for them to explain to us how to do a strategic plan?
No, what we're asking them to do is what they, how they did their plan, okay? Um because I think there's things we might be able to coordinate with them, I don't know, because I haven't, I haven't talked to them. It's not going to be, it's not going to be David, it's not going to be somebody at that level. It's going to be like an update, I think, more than anything else. But again, if you could just take a look at, and I'm sure that you and Alice will work, work with Carter's to find out, but maybe if we could put them on the agenda. The whole idea is to give us a forecast of what our numbers are going to look like, um because we don't know what we're going to get from shallow draft. We don't know if we'll get more money from the state. So I think it's critical for us to know how much money we're going to have uh with all the projects and things we've got. So that's all I had. Uh questions? Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Wayne.
Thank you. Nice to meet everybody.
Just, just as a protocol thing, we talked about a little bit, so everybody's clear out there. When we pull something off the consent agenda, it just allows that individual to come up here and ask questions. I think Wayne, your report was a hundred and something pages long?
Yeah.
I wasn't asking you to make a hundred, a hundred page pers, but I think if we're going to ask somebody questions about a report, we have to take it off the consent agenda, so that's, the protocol, is that, does that work for everybody to have that as our protocol? All right.
Uh so, new board, welcome. So the way our report's from, it runs from the last board meeting to the cutoff date, so for that period, we ran fifty-three total calls, fifty-five percent were fire and forty-five percent were EMS. And you know, it's skewed because fires, if there's a water line break, we go shut it off, you know, stuff like that, so it encompasses everything. Our new, uh I will say this, our new jet ski is in service, so that new lift is going to come in great. Uh we just finished the break-in period on it. The guys have been out training on it, the break-in period. Um so we got to take it and get it serviced and then it's ready to roll.
So do you have any vacancies right now?
No, ma'am, we're full.
You're full, okay. And do you have any training planned for staff in the next quarter?
Uh yes, ma'am, uh we're getting ready to send five to Cape Fear Community College for the January seminar. It starts on Monday, goes through Sunday, and they'll, the different classes start each different days of the week, so they'll be spread out through that day of the week, so that's coming up in January.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just one thought, do we have any pressure issues? I'm putting my Onwasa hat on. Have you seen anything? They're doing, I, everybody knows they're doing a meter change out this week, right? They're putting in the automated meters. So if you haven't gotten notice, like mine went out, you're going to get a little bit of a pop uh when they put it in. The new meters are so that they can just drive by and read them. It also allows them, if you've got issues, they can find out at your house that there's leaks and stuff. But have you seen any pressure issues with them at all?
Not, not normally this time of year. Um pretty good on pressure this time of year. Um and fortunately, the fire we had the other night, it wasn't big enough to require a hydrant. We put it out with one line, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I did have one more, just real quick. Because is this a good time of year if somebody needs a survey to see if their smoke detectors are okay, or whether they need more?
Yeah.
Can they call and see if you guys can help out with that?
Absolutely, I mean, we, year-round. I mean, even during the summer when people are here, you know, at their homes and they want a survey or exit route, or uh just the guys to come out and look over things, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And, and I know you did this last time, remind people, you replace batteries, you replace, there's a lot of services that you provide for people if they call you, correct?
So if, if you still have a smoke detector with a battery, now the new smoke detectors, the battery's built in. So you have to buy a whole new smoke detector, and if people go buy them, we will install them, correct? Um we'll come out, and don't forget, we also do the address signs. So if people need an address sign, they can call the station, the guys will make the sign and come out and install it as well.
And it's, it's right, if they're over ten years old,
Correct, yes, ma'am.
the smoke detectors are not good and need to be replaced.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody for inspections? Planning department? And now, police department. Kip, did you have something?
As usual, we step up our patrols in the wintertime, we're stepping them up even more in the neighborhoods. A lot of people are uh gone. I'll add to that by saying, we get a, a good many calls and people are giving us video, people that are around their houses. So if you have those, it's great, call us, we'll email it to us, we'll check those areas. A lot of times, it turns out to be people that were just looking at houses. They like to go up and look through windows. Some of the houses are for sale, some of them are not. But it'll give us an idea of what's going on. They've sent us a lot of those. I will say, out of this report, we did have a pretty bad wreck up here on New River Inlet recently in the 600 block. I think a lot of that had to do with, excuse me, there's a lot of curves that go through there, a lot of activity with people working. Truck was parked partially in the road, because you can't get off the road with those large trucks. I believe the lady that came around, the son caught her in the eyes a lot, which is not an excuse, but it, it was a factor that you need to think about. In the afternoon, about 4:30, she hit the back of that truck, and then she ran over the guy. So he got injured really bad. Police and fire both, everybody got out there pretty quick. Tourniquets were applied. He went to the hospital and he's doing fine. So I'll answer any other questions you have.
In, in regards to budget, did you have vehicles, I think we had two vehicles in the budget this year?
We did. We purchased one. There's still funds in there for another.
Okay. All right. So one was purchased.
One was purchased.
Okay. And do you have any vacancies right now?
I do not.
Okay.
That's a good thing. Looking for a job.
Chief, quick question. The accident that the, all these contractor trucks, I mean, everybody that lives here knows, it's, it's a nightmare. Do these guys have requirements of putting the triangles out or anything prior to? That way you know the lady hits the triangle before she hits the tree. I know they want to stop, drop, and roll and get out of there as quick as they can, but extra two minutes of throwing some triangles out or something?
We don't have a requirement for that. He had his flashers on.
Okay.
All that was working.
All right.
So I think the sun had a lot to do with it. Need to slow down coming through there, especially when all that activity where people are working. That was a big factor.
Chief, also, I know, obviously, we've had a lot of training lately, the offseason being the, the best time for the officers to train. Emphasizing, how many officers have we sent out to radar school recently? I know, just to warn people that we are actively enforcing speed limits and, and what our efforts are.
We had two go recently. We've had some, of course, they're already certified. We have two getting ready to go to class, so everybody be up to speed on that.
To let it be a word of warning, to please obey the speed limit. And, because I know that that tends to be a lot of complaints that I hear, both as a, you know, as reserve officer prior and as a citizen, talking about the speeds on Island Drive and such. Thank you, chief.
Right.
More thing that I wanted to throw out there for you and the board, just as food for thought. But we have this great digital sign here at Town Hall. And I was wondering if you thought it would make sense to maybe get one coming from Surf City into North Topsoil where we could publish our speed limit and some of our rules and regs there, just for, so when people cross over, they know they're in a different municipality and that we do have, you know, our
Speed limit changes there.
Yes.
We can look at those. They make some smaller ones now. They have some that are on sign mounting. And we do have one sign that we mount on the sign that when device that does radar, and it has the speed that shows on it. We're getting ready to put it back out.
Okay.
And we can move it to different places around the island.
And that has audit features on it. It has audit features on it, so that you can see speeds at times as well, right? Get reporting.
Right. It'll give us the report on what time it was, how many cars crossed, what their speeds were, what average speed was. It does a great big printout.
But while we're on that too, if we can, when we talk to the county next time, with everybody talking about 45 and 35, I know with the buildup in Sneed's Ferry, it's not our territory. It's not our roads, but all our citizens go through there. It's 55 at the dentistry center, through Dollar General, through Ricks, now Evolve's built up. You get that deadhead where people are trying to get in Evolve, trying to get into Ricks. There's been several accidents there already, I think, that Turkey Creeks had to deal with. And, and we've had to be second, second apartment in. We'd just like to try and maybe talk to the county and the DOT on that, moving forward for the safety of our citizens.
We've got a new board, but just to recall this, we took no action on changing the speed limit on New River Inlet. On Island Drive, they specifically told us that there is, they are not going to reduce that speed limit. Because there's no bends, there's, it's a straightaway and everything else. So that's their road. We can't do that. It's fine to bring it back up again, but they basically shut that one down without, without comment. They, they had the different reaction to New River Inlet, but on Island Drive, they were pretty solid.
So a comment on that, on Island Drive, if citizens still want to see that reduced, they can still go straight to the state on that, because we are seeing speeds of 55 on Island Drive.
If you remember, though, we talked about that being an enforcement issue, not a, not a speed limit issue. Because, and again, everybody knows I spend a lot of time looking at this stuff. The number one accident place on this island is in Surf City, where they have a 35 mile an hour speed limit and they allow LSVs. That by far is the highest traffic accident rate on the island. And the numbers on New River Inlet were one accident every 10 million miles traveled. So I'm just, those are the numbers. Fine to open it back up again. We can have a discussion. But I think it's going to be, and chief, in your opinion, Island Drive's going to be a tougher discussion, I think, than New River Inlet.
I think it would. DOT's looked at it a couple, a couple of times.
I didn't want to open that can. Warren's, I was just saying, next time we're talking to the county to discuss the 45 there, or 55 at Ricks.
It won't be the county. It's the state, everything is state, yeah. What's funny is, you know, I go to all the county meetings. By every meeting that comes up, they tell people, we have no involvement in the roads in the county. They're all state roads. We don't maintain them. We don't fix them, whatever. But we have roads that I think are going to be part of our, our look at next year's budget as to what we've got to fix. But the county will, I'm just telling you, they, they have no desire to get into that, because once it starts.
I don't mean to drag the meeting on also, but hats off, hats off to the DOT for, or was it Public Works that did some of these bridges here that you don't clack your teeth when you go over the bridge there at Seaview Pier now. So whoever did that job, thank you to them.
That was the state that did it, but I know Public Works worked with him on that to get it done.
Go on to new business. All right. First one is calendar year schedule. So I know there are, why don't, let's, let's do a motion to approve in a second and then do a discussion. So motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion.
I'd like to move the February meeting to February 11th. And then I believe we had another change we needed to make to move the May.
If possible, I have a conflict for the May 6th meeting. If we could move that to the 13th.
Right.
Sorry. Check your calendars.
So Alexa, we always have the right to do special meetings if, if we need to, too. So even if we schedule these meetings and we change the, and we put those dates on, if there ends up being a conflict going forward, then we can, we can modify those as well, correct?
Yes, as long as you issue the proper notice. Correct.
How much notice?
So if you're doing a special meeting, you need 48 hours. If it's some kind of emergency meeting, as soon as you can. But if you're wanting to amend the actual agenda itself, rather than cancel and create a new meeting, that'll require a seven-day notice from when the next meeting will be.
So what I'm hearing is move the 4th of February to the 11th. Okay. Okay, let me stop. Every other meeting will be the first Wednesday of the month, except that we're going to move February 4th to February 11th and May 6th to May 13th.
Everybody have consensus on the board?
Yes.
Now we have to, we have to do a motion to approve it. So now a motion, now you need to modify the motion to include those dates.
So I'm going to make a modified motion to, a motion to modify the board's meeting dates for February and May?
No, no. A motion to, no, a motion to establish the dates for the year. That will be the first Wednesday of every month, except for February and May.
Yeah. You can make a motion to approve the calendar year 2026 Board of Alderman Regular Meeting with the February meeting
On the 4th.
On the 11th and the May meeting on the 13th.
Right.
So that's the motion. That's the motion. Thank you.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Program got a little bit complicated, so I think it's going to be Larry and I handling this. And you can talk about a BICAC meeting when I get done. Chris is going to give us an update or was going to give us, but he had some health issues today, so he could not make the meeting. He sends his regrets. But what we're looking at is, I got a, one of those congratulation letters, I'm sure everybody did, from Lazara. And so what I'm, what I'd like to do, what I'm planning on doing, is trying to set up a meeting with him to discuss with Alice and maybe Chris and somebody else to generally discuss funding for us. You heard Mike talk about the shallow draft. I'm not convinced that we're going to get half of that fund. Because right now, there's $72 million in there. I think they're last thing. And Fran's not a yes. We'll be, we would be asking for half of that. So the idea, and I've talked about this in previous meetings, and I talked to Tim Foster, chairman, yesterday again. The county will support us in trying to do which, what did Chris say? Is it Oak Island that got the 20 million? Does that sound right? So, you know, what their suggestion was, is that we try to get legislation that says North Topsoil Beach, not just a fund to ask for money. And so the idea is to meet with Lazara to see if he can do that, similar to what they did at Oak Island, and try to get separate funds in addition to that. And I think, Alice, we talked about this. We have to get to him now to start it, because in January is when he's going to be taking this forward. We can't wait until January to have a discussion with him. And then also bring up the issue relating to the state on the, on the borrow pit, to be able to handle those as well. So the idea would be trying to set up a meeting, just a general, how do you do, you know, hey, I'm the new mayor type of meeting, and then hit him, give him an update, and have Chris there to give him an update on what the project looks like and the funding and stuff. So it's not something that I have, we have to get approval for, from the board. I just want to give people a heads up. Yeah, because I think more than anything, I wouldn't give you a heads up that I was going to meet with him, but generally, I'm not convinced. And I think it's why we talked about having the Carter's come in, figuring out how much money we need to get this project done. Because if you remember, Chris's last projection, it had, what, a three to one match in it, which required us to have, my memory is 34 or 5 million dollars from, from the shallow draft. And so hopefully, we'll get that. But my recollection, you were at the Byways meeting, Fran, they only fund that about 20 million bucks a year. So I'm not sure how they even got to 72 million on it. But we need to get our hand on that one and also separate funding. So anyway, that's, it's kind of a general comment about trying to have that. And then I'll report back in January or before that, if we have to call a special meeting. And then Larry, did you want to add anything else?
I'll get used to this. Or not. The, Chris is, is pretty good, too, at knowing how to go and who to go and all this stuff. And the bottom line is, is that we've got to get to that point. And that's one of the things that we were going to somewhat discuss today before, before Chris had, had his issue. But so, so we're, but, but we've got to do something quickly if we're going to be, because if, if in fact we can get our approvals, we've still got to be able to commit the money. And, and we, we're going to have a hard time unless we, I mean, this is the time that we need to be going in for, for asking for the money. So I think it's a good move to do that. And I think that if, if available, Chris probably needs to be involved in that process, too.
Right. And, you know, I talked about, and I think what makes sense is, I'm not an expert on this, Alice, I mean, you're a lot more educated, but having Chris lay out for, for him what this looks like. But the other thing, too, is I would like to schedule that before the BICAC meeting that you're scheduling on the 16th, so that everybody will get an idea of what we're talking about for funding purposes. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, right, right now, money, I mean, money, approvals and money is the two things. I mean, we've got a plan basically in place. It's, it's a matter of getting, getting the money in place and, and getting the final approvals on everything. And, and, you know, we have little snags here and there with different state agencies. Yeah, and we won't get into all that. But in, in any event, we, what, what my plan was, was to have a, a BICAC meeting scheduled for, for 1216 that was not originally scheduled. But I wanted to schedule one so that Chris could bring the, the, the committee up to date, because we, we got the cart before the horse, the last go-around, where he made presentations to the board. And some of my, some of our committee members are not in the whole loop. So we were going to have a meeting to have a, to determine some of that and this, and, and I don't know, I've got to revisit that. The date may have to change, because I've got at least two people that now told me they could not make that, make that date.
The other thing that you mentioned to me, which I think is a good idea, is, excuse me, trying to do that here, because this, this meeting's going to last several hours. And so having it just dedicated to the beach project and to the funding and everything else makes more sense than trying to
And we had all, we had all of the people getting sworn in and all the day, too. But yes, plus that way, it, it'll go, it'll be online and, and everybody that comes knows exactly what we're going to be talking about and not just a, a part of the meeting. So as soon as I can get that clear on the dates, I don't know if we can make another date or not, but we'll, we'll work on that. I'd really like to have one before the end of the year.
No offense to the committee members, but we need to have one before the end of the year. So if one or two people can't make it, or they're going to call in or whatever, that's fine.
We had one that had a death and, and one that already told me they weren't going to be able to be here, but so
But the chairman will be there?
The chairman will be there, yeah. One way or the other. And so we'll, we'll get that out. Still panel, we're getting it out this afternoon.
Okay.
Thank you. Three check signatories. Right now, you and me are two. We can either move that, we don't need three today, but if people are interested, or if there's just one person that wants to be another check signatory. Alice, do you think we need three today? Do you want three today, if possible?
It can be moved, but the two that are on there have to be committed to being available to sign the checks.
Okay.
I think we've had trouble understanding what the schedule was sometimes and being notified. So I think if we can set the schedule, and I'm happy to spend a few minutes after the meeting and understand the schedule for the next six, eight weeks, then we can revisit this one. Because I think with newer board members, they might not be as up to speed as to what's in there.
Mayor, I'd be glad to be one of the signatories.
Okay. But
If anybody, if nobody else wants it, we can
I mean, unless somebody else wants to do it.
Does anybody want to do that?
Well, but I, I'd be happy to sit with people, too, while we're doing it, so that we can go over kind of the process.
Well, do we want to, do we need a motion to add him as a secretary, a signatory? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We make Larry the third signatory.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Larry's opposed. The next item's been removed, the electric bikes. The next one goes to Chip, amended rules of procedure.
Thank you, mayor. So just by way of background, it appears that the board in December of 2021 had adopted a, a suggested rules of procedure for the city council. I don't know how widely distributed and used that was, but my colleague Trey Ferguson and I, in talking with Mayor Grant and Alice, decided to put forward a dra, a more comprehensive set of rules of procedure that are catered specifically to the town. I think the, the prior rules were, were somewhat general, so they're in your packet. I believe you've all seen them and had a chance to review them. So if, if they're acceptable, the board would, would want to accept them by motion. These are the, these are not laws. These are the rules that you, as a board, are agreeing to hold yourselves accountable by. So.
So what are the major changes? I read through it, but then I wasn't sure. Well, what have we been doing? What, what, what does this change?
We didn't do a side-by-side analysis of what, of the rules, the, the rules from 2021 and the new rules. When we came on board, we were not particularly aware that there was the 2021 rules. So, you know, we updated by way of these new rules. We think they're more, they are more comprehensive and they are more catered towards North Topsoil than we believe the previous rules were.
The one material change in this is under Rule 4A. Right now, you can send agenda items in within three days, working. This moves it to seven. This moves it to seven. I, the reason I'm okay with that, if nothing else, is if we start to, if we do the three days, that doesn't give Alice and her team time to be able to put information together. So if I hit them three days before a meeting, and I said, I really would like to add the issue of the finance guy coming up with this huge study, I've given him three business days to do it, now it's moved to seven business days. So when you put stuff in the agenda, that, that to me was the only material thing that I saw in there when I went through it.
Do you see any other, any other changes? Alice, did you notice anything that would be?
Problematic?
Not problematic.
Different.
It can even be, it can even be good.
Right.
You know, I'm not saying any.
No, I, I reviewed it when it was sent to Mayor Grant, and I provided my input in that draft, and it was in, my input was incorporated.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, if the board wants a side-by-side analysis or a comparison, we'd be happy to do that.
So who drafted, I mean, who's authored these?
Trey and I.
Trey and you authored these?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So it doesn't mean that the board couldn't change them over time?
The board is free to amend their own rules, they're free to suspend their own rules, they're free to just disregard them.
Well, remind me, we changed the language on one thing, because I told you the way it worked is, oh, it was removing, okay, so, originally it was written so that if I put something on the agenda, to take it off the agenda in the meeting, it had to be unanimous, which means by definition, unless I'm willing to remove it, it could never come off the agenda. So we changed that to a majority, so that if something, because that's been our practice in the past, right? Because when I read it the first time, I'm like, wait a minute, as long as the person putting it on doesn't want to remove it, then there's no effect to that, that term, and you did rewrite that.
Yes, that's correct.
All right. We do, since it's, it's a first look at this thing, if you could do a quick side-by-side, and then we put it on the agenda for January to approve it, does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
I like red lines, it's easier for me to do that stuff.
You look at that, too, the need for the board to occasionally have working sessions, or a strategic planning meeting, or to call for kind of a retreat, I didn't see some of those things in there, or what the procedure would be.
That, that's going to be under, that's going to be under G, he's going to talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a difference, so this is basically, I don't know what you call it, just, what do they call it, whole, not Hoyle's rules, what's that, something's rules of procedure?
Robert's rules.
Robert rules, just like Robert rules type of thing.
No, I, I was looking at for the amount of days we'd need to give notice of that type of thing and cover those things. So if the board wanted to call a, a strategic planning meeting, how many days would we need for the public notice, et cetera?
That would be a special meeting, so you would have to have the forty-eight hour notice before.
So are you saying you want something like that in the rules of procedure?
I would not, because some of those things are, are hard baked, but the state, too, right?
I'm sorry?
Those are requ, are, could be state requirements in terms of meetings as well, right?
So.
Like if we decide to change it to five minutes for a special meeting, that's not going to cut it.
No, you are legally required to do the forty-eight.
That's my question.
What I will say is, though, there are some places that go ahead and predate their, like, budget work sessions, and that's adopted within their regular scheduled meetings, and that way they don't have to give notice, and that typically allows the board an advance knowledge.
Okay, I think, what I, what I'm hearing is, I think that would be helpful in January to come back.
And amend the agenda.
Well, no, yeah, we could do that, but generally, come back with, when are we going to start our budget process, when we have those meetings and stuff, so go ahead and set those. Because in the past, we've used, we'd just use the alderman meeting as those.
Mm-hmm.
I think what I've heard from people is, they would like to have a couple of days of a workshop to be able to go through a lot of details in terms of plan.
Yeah, in my experience, I have had boards do that, where they have dedicated meetings for that.
And that's what I'm saying, in January, pick the dates.
And it's adopted within their regular scheduled.
Okay, that makes sense.
So that scheduling issue, Mayor, the clerk will work on that, we'll work on the side-by-side comparison, okay.
And you've got the next one, which is consolidation. And just, just to give people a heads up, your partner brought this to me at the end of the last meeting, and so I suggested you bring it forward, as what your recommendations were about combining the two boards.
Right, so, as we had spoken, I'll kind of tee it off, and then the board can consider it, and then we, if the board is amenable, by a sense of the board, we'll come back with a hard plan in January. So, as, as many on the board may know, the planning boards created by Statute 160D-301, and the Board of Aldermen by ordinance may provide appointments to it. The planning board's duties are enumerated in statute, and, as well as the town's uniform development ordinance. The Board of Adjustments also created by statute. The Board of Aldermen can designate a planning board to perform any of the duties of the Board of Adjustment, in addition to its other duties, but they can't do it the other way around. Basically by saying, you can merge a Board of Adjustment into a Planning Board, but you can't merge a Planning Board into a Board of Adjustment. So recently, I think there's been a recognition that the workload has been somewhat unpredictable for both of the boards, and so the discussion came up with Trey and the mayor about merging the boards, in other words, taking the Board of Adjustment, merging it into the Planning Board. There is statutory language that allows for the Planning Board to then serve in the Board of Adjustment role for quasi-judicial decisions and things like that. So the Planning Board currently has four members and two alternates, serving three-year terms. The town's ordinance requires seven members and two alternates, so we're down three members in the Planning Board. Board of Adjustment has four members, also serving three-year terms. Town's ordinance requires five members and four alternates. So, I think, as sometimes communities find, the interest or the, the ability to recruit people kind of tends to taper down, so putting a board together might give you enough people to have that one board to serve in those, those dual roles. So, we would advise a merger of the Board of Adjustment into the Planning Board, and we're happy to come back in January with kind of a, a step-by-step of how we go about doing it. There will be ordinance changes to that, too.
And then we talked about, too, is, because we went through this with staggered terms for aldermen, we've got current members of the Planning Board. Is it, if we're doing this, and I know you'll address this, is it op iniscio, nobody's got a term right now? Do the new people get terms? How, all that kind of stuff? If you could give us some guidance on those type of things? Because clearly, I think, based upon what's happened in the past, the last thing we want to do is have everybody's terms expire at the same time.
No, and, and, and we agree.
And so, you know, staging those type of things, and.
There has to be a, a setup of the seats and how long they last, so that, you're exactly right, everybody doesn't populate the board, and then in three years, the whole board gets wiped out.
Right.
So that would be a piece of what we would bring forward, yes.
And then, and then give us some advice in terms of, like, in existing, and I don't know what the answer is, in existing, I'm a Planning Board person, and I've got a year left. If we merge the other board in, does my term stay? And, and say, those are the type of things that, because that'll get back to the staggered board thing, so.
If I may, in my experience, when creating a new board, whether that's from scratch or merging, typically what I have done in my past as a clerk is, the entire board's terms get reset, and that's whether you want to do an entire new application poll. But everybody's terms are reset, and then those terms are two or three years, some even one year, just to allow that. And then depending on the regulations of how many terms they're allowed to serve, which I don't think that we do have a regulation, that one-year term doesn't count too much towards that, their ability to continue to serve. But that's how I've done it in the past.
That's exactly the issue. The, the issue is if, and, and again, if you're asking me, if we go down that path, then we've got to go back to the forty-five day notice, we've got all those type of things built in, that's why, we could, you know, if we have to do a, if we decided today, which we're not, that we're going to merge, merge the boards and all the seats come up, that we need to start noticing now, because we got forty-five days before we can do it. So I'm just saying, that's a guidance we need to get back from you, because right now we have a functioning Planning Board. The issue is, if we're going the other way, how do we transition in one of those pieces? Does that make sense?
I believe if you were to set an expiration for the Planning Board and the Board of Adjustments, and then set a beginning date or beginning terms for the new board, I believe you should be able to kind of sidestep the forty-five day gap. You'll still have to advertise and still have to get applications, but you won't necessarily be in lieu of a board, you won't, you won't be without a board during that time.
Right, but that's the advice I want from there, because what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is, and I don't know what the consensus, the consensus of this board may be, everybody that sits on the Planning Board today gets to serve their term. I don't know if that's consensus or not. Or the consensus might be, everybody starts over, and we take applications, so nobody's got a seat. And I think that, as a board, is something, after you give us guidance on how this thing goes forward, then we have a consensus as, do you want to have people or not?
Yeah, we'll put a roadmap together that, that the board can see and react to.
Okay.
At this point, I would think that I would not be in favor of merging the two boards. I don't feel that that serves the citizens of the town, property owners, who are looking to go to the Board of Adjustments. I understand that we are having an issue with filling both boards, but at this time, just, just thinking about it, I would not be in favor of merging the two boards. I don't think it's in the best interest.
That's why it's, it, this is a, an issue of first impression, for them to come back and then lay out for us more, why, why it makes sense, why it doesn't make sense, and those type of things.
But do we have anything advertised now on our website that we have vacancies on these boards?
No.
No, not at this time, I'm getting advertisements together.
When do we think they'll be up?
I should be able to have them finalized by this week.
Okay, so, I mean, because the community needs to know if we have vacancies, maybe we could fill them, okay.
And, and then, are there any other jurisdictions in, that you're aware of in North Carolina that have this combined boards?
Not off the top of my head, but we could give you a list, because I know Trey, my colleague, is aware of some of them.
Yeah, because I'd be curious to see what their experience has been, and whether or not that is going to be a fit for the, for the board, if we don't have enough applicants that have applied. Again, it'd be an excellent opportunity to encourage citizens to apply whenever we do put that out, having served on the, the Board of Adjustments and recently resigning because of this position. I think it's a good spot to really get yourself into the, the town, and we are desperately in need of positions, of people to fill those positions.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? Obligations and responsibilities, you're still up.
Rolling right along. So, I'm going to go through some things here, forgive me, it might be not too lengthy, but, you know, it's, and I apologize that it's going to be a little dry, but I think that for some of the new folks, it might be, you might get a few nuggets of information, so. I've been asked by the mayor to do, to talk about obligations and the responsibilities of the board, and I think the best way to do is break it down into basically five pieces. The first one is kind of an overview of the organization and management of the town, the roles of the board, the mayor and the town manager. The second one is to talk about open meeting law. The third is to talk about closed sessions, when and under what circumstances you can go into closed sessions. The fourth is to touch on ethics, there is an ethics requirement for new board members to take certain amount of classes. And then finally is to touch on the public records law. So, to begin broadly, North Carolina, in North Carolina, local governments operate under the authority granted to them by the state legislature. So in other words, in order to act, a local government must have specific legal authority to do so. That authorization typically, typically comes in the form of statutes, and North Carolina General, General Statute, Chapter 160A, provides the authority for cities and towns, there are other sections that do as well, but that is, that is the bulk of it. The North, Town of North Topsail Beach is a municipal corporation under state law, and as such is vested with certain specific powers. The board, as this board knows, is, a Board of Aldermen is, consists of five members and a mayor, and you are authorized as a board, not individually, but as a board, to exercise all powers, functions, rights, privileges, and immunities of the corporation as allowed by law. The government and general management of the town is vested in the board. Every ordinance passed by the board is in full of force and effect immediately, unless there's a timeframe put on it. And again, getting back to what I kind of hinted at, a note of caution, your power is derived from the actions of the board collectively. You do not have any power individually. And I think a word of caution, too, that you don't want to be in situations where you give assurances that the board is going to act in a certain way, because you never quite know which way it's going to act. Obviously, the mayor, while the government and general management of the town is vested in the board, the mayor has such powers and duties as are conferred on him by law, together with other such powers and duties as may be conferred upon him by the board pursuant to law. Under the law, the mayor is recognized as the official head of the town for the purposes, service of civil process, so if the town's going to get sued, they get to give it to you, mayor. And for all ceremonial purposes, also under the law, and perhaps most importantly, as he's doing today, the mayor provides, presides over all board meetings, but only has the right to vote if there's an equal number of yays and nays, essentially to break a tie. The mayor pro tem, which you elected today, is the, is also an alderman serving as mayor pro tem, and they are entitled to vote on all matters, and they're considered an alderman for all purposes, including the determination of whether a quorum is present or not. During the absence of the mayor, the board may confer upon the mayor pro tem any of the powers and duties of the mayor. So the board may confer those powers and duties, it does not say they're automatically conferred. In the event both the mayor and the mayor pro tem are absent from a meeting, the board may elect from its members a temporary chairman. So again, board has to take positive, proactive action in that situation. The town manager, the Town of North Topsail operates under the council manager plan as provided for, in Part Two of Article Seven of 160A. The town manager serves at the board's pleasure. The town manager is the chief administrator of the town and is responsible to the board for administering all municipal affairs placed in the manager's charge by the board. Now, the board, by stat, by, the, the town manager by statute and by ordinance has certain enumerated powers and duties, there's eight of them. I want to mention just one, and then we'll talk just briefly about it. The town manager is to direct and supervise the administration of all departments, offices, and agencies of the town, subject to the general direction and control of the town except as otherwise provided by law. So, sometimes what you find is that it's, it's okay for members of the board to speak with staff, but keep in mind that staff is getting their direction from the town manager. The town manager sets the goals that, that the board gives her to set, these folks organize their time according to those goals. And sometimes when staff hears something from an alderman, they're going to want to stop what they're doing to do what the alderman wants them to do. So just make sure that you're talking to the town manager, and not directly to staff about what you need help with. The town attorney, our role, Trey Ferguson is my colleague, he and I alternate here, we represent the town acting through the board. So we don't represent individual board members, we represent the town acting through the board. So you want to keep that in mind when you're talking to us, that attorney-client privilege may not necessarily exist, since we represent the board and the town, and not you individually. So now I'll talk a little bit about open meeting law. This is important, along with closed session. Each official meeting of a public body must be open to the public, we all know this, and any person is entitled to attend the meeting. So a public body, and I'll read the definition, means in relevant part, any elected or appointed authority, board, commission, committee, council, or other body of the state, or one of its counties, cities, school administrative units, or other political subdivisions, or public corporations in the state, that is composed of two or more members and exercises or is authorized to exercise legislative, policymaking, quasi-judicial, administrative, or advisory function. So, that's the definition of a public body, if you don't fit the definition, it's not an official meeting of a public body, right? Board of Aldermen obviously is a public body, well, what's an official meeting? So an official meeting means a meeting assembling or gathering together at any time or place, or the simultaneous communication by conference telephone or other electronic means, of a majority of the members of a public body, and here's the key, for the purpose of conducting hearings. and here's the key, for the purpose of conducting hearings, participating in deliberations, or voting upon or otherwise transacting the public business within the jurisdiction real or apparent of the public body, so, this is what we had, had kind of talked about, a social meeting or other informal assembly or gathering together of the members of a public body, even if all of you are in the same location at once, does not constitute an official meeting unless it's called or held to evade the spirit and purpose of the law, in other words, as I had just talked about, if you are all in the same room, you do not want to be there for the purpose of conducting hearings, participating in deliberations, or voting upon or otherwise transacting the public business, yes ma'am?
But if it was a training session? If it was a training session, um, a discussion of learning about strategic planning, those are not m- meetings then?
I, I would dif-, a training session is you listening, you are not, um, conducting hearings, participating in deliberations, or voting upon or otherwise transacting the public business.
Thank you.
If you are at a tr-, if, if you are having a strategic session and you are engaging in conversation, that I would argue is a public meeting, and you should advertise it.
Thank you.
Okay?
So if we get together to talk about strategy, that's a public meeting, if there's a Christmas party here, that's not.
Correct, yes.
If we go to Connie's house, because she's cooking, that's not.
You're, right, but you also need to police yourselves, right, you know, that when you're at these events, you should not be talking about or deliberating about what's going on, in, that's going to be in front of you, right?
I mean, I think what you're telling is, the common sense on this thing is erring the side of not, not
Yes.
doing that.
Yes.
Because you don't want to be called into something and said, wait a minute, I saw Mark and Kip
Huddled in the corner.
And Rick, we're out, right, we're huddling in the corner.
Right.
You know, and, and talking about something, so, you know, it's, the safe side of this is, if we're going to get together, because we're gonna have strategic planning, we're having a, you know, meeting like that, I know the county has all that stuff open to the public, when they go in, they, they are on that side.
Advertising.
So what you're telling us is, understand, lean the other way.
Yes.
Lean the other way, notice the meetings and have it open to the public, and then you're not
If there's a shadow of a doubt.
Go that way.
Notice it and hold an op-, ho-, hold a public meeting.
But, as we discussed today, if Mark needs to understand one of the committees and what it does, and he calls Connie about that committee, that's just information sharing, correct?
Yeah, right, that's, that's not a public body.
Thank you.
Right?
We have to have a quorum to be a public body.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I think that's
Okay.
And electronically, if I want to send something to the board, I don't do it all, I blind carbon copy, or if I, um...
Well, what do you want to send, Merry Christmas, that, you can send that to the entire board, what do you all think about electric bikes on the beach? I wouldn't do that.
Okay.
You wanna, you wanna, that's, you want to put that on the agenda, you want to ask everybody what they think in a public meeting about that, so that, so the public can, can hear everybody's thoughts.
But, but also, keep in mind, I'm not trying to play lawyer, everything you do on your email address that is town, unless it's privileged
We're gonna get to that.
Is subject to FOIA.
Yeah.
So, you know, if, if you send out something, you know, what did they used to say, pretend it's on the front page of the New York Times.
Yeah, so, moving on quickly, so, just a, a, about, some talking points about voting, so, um, an official meeting of a public body must have a quorum to act, that's in statute, um, a quorum is a majority of the actual membership of the board plus the mayor excluding vacant seats, so, if somebody was, by vacant, they mean if somebody was not seated and sworn in, okay, we don't have to worry about that, an affirmative vote equal to a majority of all the members of the board, not excused from voting on the question and issue, including the mayor's vote if needed to be cast, um, is required to adopt an ordinance, take any action having the effect of an ordinance, authorize or commit an expenditure of public funds, or make, ratify, or authorize any contract on behalf of the town.
Would you be specific, talk about, so I, so Connie gets recused, all right, we've got five members on this board, two of them get recused, do we have to have two to be a quorum, or do we have to have three because of mayor?
So, two of them are recu-, two of them are recused.
There's a mayor, there's a mayor, not an all.
So, under the definition, a quorum is a majority of the actual membership of the board plus the mayor excluding vacant seats, that's an interesting question, I don't know that I have an answer to that.
Yeah, I don't think that's
I would have to look into that and see.
I understand there's been talk about people being recused and that kind of stuff, and so I, I think that's something
I don't want to answer off the top of my head for something like that, um, so, moving along, a member who has withdrawn from a meeting without being excused by a majority vote, so if you want to withdraw from a meeting, you just can't get up and walk out, they have, the, the board has to vote to allow you to leave, a member who has withdrawn from a meeting without being excused by majority of vote of the remaining members present is counted as present for purposes of determining whether or not a quorum is present, now, thi- this is also where it gets a little dicey, no member is to be excused from voting except upon matters involving the consideration of the member's own financial interest, or official conduct, or on matters on which the member is prohibited from voting by law, you have a statutory duty to vote, okay, a failure to vote by a member who is physically present in the council chamber, or who has withdrawn without being excused by a majority vote of the remaining members present, shall be recorded as an affirmative vote, so if you leave and you're unexcused, you're voting yes.
This, this is the legislative thing that says, if three people decide to leave, because they don't want to be voting on something, they, they still, they still thought
Yeah, you can't get away from it.
Can't, you know, that happened in Texas, remember, where they walked out, so you didn't have a quorum?
Went to Illinois, yeah.
And
Yep, uh, quickly about closed sessions, um, so unlike a, a, a public meeting, a closed session is an official meeting of a public body in which the public is excluded from attending, closed sessions can be held only when permitted by law, and the statutes one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, there are ten situations and only ten situations in which you can go into closed session, I'm not gonna go through them right now, um, a public body may hold a closed session only if it makes and adopts a motion to do so in an open meeting, which we know, um, every motion to go into closed session must, one, cite one or more of the permissible purposes that were just listed above, or that are one of the ten, must also cite the specific statute associated with that permissible purpose in open session before going into closed session, so, for example, I move that the board go into closed session, give the example, to prevent the premature disclosure of an honorary degree, scholarship prize, or similar award pursuant to North Carolina general statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, two, and then you make a mo-, the motion must be second and must be approved, once the closed session is done, as the folks know who have been on the board, the board must return to the council chamber and make a motion to come back into open session before they can adjourn, um, failure to follow the open meeting law, um, can result in an injunction, a court can order the board to stop the reoccurrence of past violations, the continuance of current violations, or preempt future violations, or any action taken can be invalidated, all right, ethics, thank you for being patient, um, so, ethics for the board of aldermen, uh, are governed by two statutes, one sixty-eight, eighty-six, and eighty-seven, uh, according to the law, the town must adopt a code of ethics, which it's my understanding that the town did, um, I did see the, the, the code of ethics for committees, I don't know if, I haven't seen the one for the board though actually, but it appears that it was, it was, um, adopted.
Um, so, from what I could find per minutes and prior agendas, I see where they've noted in the minutes that there were ethics adopted, but I have not been able to find the ethics themselves, there
Okay, so
Just the appointed
If, if we can't find it, the board has to by law adopt one, so we're gonna have to do that.
And you have that January?
We can, yes.
That's for a appointed board.
Yeah, it's just for a appointed board.
Um, there, the statute says certain things have to be in there, I, I won't, I won't go over those, um, so, i- in terms of ethics, just keep in mind that, and as we had talked about mayor, it's, it's, it's not just the conflict itself, it's the appearance of a conflict, I mean, everybody's got a pretty good head on your shoulders, if you think this is a little hinky, this might not look right, maybe don't do it, or go the other way, or, or reach out to Trey and I and say, hey, this is happening, what, what should I do, uh, we're always available to give you, um, advice, finally, there's a statute that says, all new board members must receive a minimum of two clock hours of ethics education within twelve months after the initial election or appointment to office, and again, within twelve months after each subsequent election or appointment to office, and that's one sixty-eight dash eighty-seven.
That's all we said.
Yeah, so, um, I'll skip over a little bit of this, I'll go to public records law, um, so the public records law in mass, i- in, um, in North Carolina is governed by chapter one thirty-two, um, in essence, it makes clear that the written materials and other records created or received by local governments are the property of the citizens of North Carolina, and as such, the citizens have a right to them, so a public record, I'll go through the definition quickly, includes all documents, it's rather broad, all documents, papers, letters, maps, books, photographs, films, sound recordings, magnetic or other tapes, electronic data processing records, artifacts, or other documentary material, regardless of physical form or characteristics, made or received pursuant to law or ordinance in connection with the transaction of public business, right, we were just talking about an email that goes out to everybody that says Merry Christmas, is that, is that in connection with the transaction of public business, there's an argument to be made that maybe it's not, um, by any agency of North Carolina governa-, government or its subdivision, so unless certain narrow exceptions apply, these records must be produced upon request by a citizen, so some of the examples, one of the primary examples is attorney-client privilege, we don't have to produce records that are subject to attorney-client privilege, the courts read the public records law liberally in favor of public access to town records and information, so keep that in mind if you are writing or receiving materials, if you, as a public official, receive a, a, a piece of paper, and it's in your official capacity, that is a public record, okay, so, just wrapping up, Trey Ferguson, who you meet next month, and I are here to help in any way we can, if you have quick questions, long questions, we would rather hear from you beforehand as opposed to on the back end, whoops, um, so please reach out to us, yes?
So, one area that we didn't, you didn't comment on that much is the fiduciary responsibilities of the board and the mayor, and, you know, how that trickles to the town manager, I would like, um, a few comments on that, maybe next month, about the fiduciary responsibilities to the town, because we have had a town in North Carolina recently get in a lot of trouble in that area, and so I, yes, I think that would be well worth reviewing.
Ha- happy to do that, yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, I, I think it'd be important too, when you get, um, I'm making this up, Kip has a question, he's gonna reach out to you guys, I would suggest then, when you, on, on January, if that happens, to come back and, and brief the board in terms of if you've got issues that you want to get resolved, like, I don't mean for you specifically, but he says, hey, after thinking about this, does this count or does that count, so, it might not be a bad idea, in, in the, uh, report, the attorney's report each month to kind of talk about anything that's hanging out.
Just generally, sure, happy to do that as well.
Yeah, because, you know, with, with new board members and stuff, I mean, you know, Connie and I have been doing this, and Alice for one, and obviously Laura, I think that would be helpful, all right, any other?
Just, that, that was a great summary, can you email us a copy of that?
Yeah.
As part of public record?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
There's a video.
Correct.
Uh, let's move on to H, Alice?
Yes, thank you, um, this item is, um, what I briefly spoke about under my manager's report, um, this is, uh, for the board to, uh, consider the, and approve a motion for the contract authorization ordinance in the agreement with Roth Staffing, um, Companies, and this is to provide immediate assistance to the finance department, um, as I mentioned previously, um, there's an option in there, um, for a temp to hire scenario, should, uh, the person come on board and work out, um, we can, that person can remain as a temp for as long as we choose, but if we choose, there's an option to bring that person, to move them to, um, to hire them as well, if they work out well, um, this will also gives the opportunity too, to, uh, have people come in, test them out, they can test us out, we test them out, um, if they're not the right fit, we were simply request another candidate that has went through the vetting process, um, with Roth and, uh, went through the testing, of course, um, and start over, um, this is recommended for many reasons, one, it's for internal control that was talked about a lot today, um, it's essential to have two people in the finance department, um, and not one person, so that the other person is in place, um, just vetting everything is the second person, um, that's essential, and also keeping in compliance with the LGC finding that, um, and corrective action plan that was put in place in February of twenty twenty-five, um, that plan, um, you know, requires, the board approved and sent to the LGC, which they accepted, but requires the town to create and maintain these inner, internal control that provides that clear separation in, of duties and processing and approval of financial transactions, um, so, eh, this is, um, this is crucial to have another person right now in finance department, uh, to complete the task specifically, uh, with payroll, um, while we talk about, you know, um, the new finance officer and I have talked about, um, using, um, ADP down the road for outsourcing payroll functions, um, but also help with accounts payable, and that clear oversight so that there's not a, uh, duplication of duties.
Uh, well, no, we, motion approved first, and then discussion, motion to approve, do I hear a motion to approve?
I made the motion to approve.
I heard a second.
I second.
Okay, now discussion.
So, Alice, with this company, since we recently had a conflict with our outsourced accounting firm and our, um, audit firm, do we know who the principals are with this company, and there, is there any vested interest with our current outsourced accounting firm?
I asked specifically, because I assumed this question would come up, and I asked GWI in particular if there was any partners affiliated with their company whatsoever, and I was told no, um, they, I will say they have used them as a source for personnel before, so, if they need help, they have reached out and provided, they provided staffing to them on a temporary basis in the past, that's the only affiliation, um, but, that, that I am aware of.
So have we researched who the principals of this firm are and where they're based and that kind of thing?
Uh, it's outlined in the agreement, their umbrella, if you will, of partners, um, and nothing as far as, um, I could tell, there was no affiliation, this was also submitted to the attorneys for review prior coming to the board, uh, so it was vetted through them as well, so it was not just me.
Is this a North Carolina company, or no?
Yes, they are, um, in North Carolina.
And our attorneys see no conflict?
I don't know that we were asked to review what, whether there was a relationship between, um, Roth Staffing and GWI, we did review the contract, the proposed engagement agreement.
I mean, uh, one, one of the ways to handle that is, we can approve the contract subject to that review.
So you're looking specifically if there's any affiliation with GWI, just so I'm clear?
Correct.
It's not my question, it's hers.
Yes, that's my question, because when we asked GWI in the past whether there was an affiliation with another on their forms, they got that information wrong, so I want to make sure that there's not an affiliation.
So just, so, we are going to hold then on putting that person
No.
In place.
No, I mean, we understand the need for the person.
No, I, well, we will, um...
Hang, hang on, we've got one alderman's position on that, I have not heard that any other alderman supports delaying this thing, it's just an issue that's being raised as part of the discussion that we're doing, um, because I, you know, and, we can have more discussion on this, she's raising the issue, it's not been decided by the board yet, right, so, it, you know, it's a fair issue to raise, but I think we go back to, right now, we have somebody just retired, we've got Wayne in the finance department, we've got a representation to the LGC that we're gonna fill this position, okay, and as I understand it, you have somebody that can start have somebody that can start today.
Tomorrow.
December 3rd.
All right. So I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm just saying this. Go ahead.
I'm not opposed with approving the position. I am opposed to us not doing our due diligence and finding out if there's a conflict. So I do think we need to move forward, but I think our legal team needs to do a little background and see if there's any, from the company perspective, ownership issues or conflicts with this firm.
I, you know, based on the, based on the situation that we're currently in financially with far as having people to do the work, this is, this is only a six-month contract, correct?
We have it maintaining through June 30th, 2026, should we need that. And again, the intention to was to continue to, to recruit internally as well on our website. And if we've got somebody that was a viable candidate that tested well, we would certainly, we would certainly hire that individual and then potentially look at disbanding this contract.
And what I read, what I read in the, in the, in the presentation was that if we decided, if you decided or that we needed that this person was the person we wanted to hire, we have the right to do that before the expiration of the contract.
Correct.
And we just pay out what we need to pay out. There's a, and there's a predetermined number that's in there.
Yes.
And so, you know, I, I think worst-case scenario, if in fact there is any affiliation in the ownership, it's not going to be more than six months, and we're going to be, we could mess around for weeks trying to get that done. And I think that if the person can come to work, I personally would, would say that we ought to, or my, my vote would be that we ought to, to vote to approve the, the, the contract and, and deal with the consequences of who may own some of that, because we're only dealing with a six-month contract anyway. And it's, and it's got a, it's got a determined number to it. It's not, it's not an open-end, it's not an open-end contract. There's a determined number. So that's all that we're going to pay for that time period. Is that correct?
Correct.
Can I just point out something in the contract, too? This is different than hiring GWI to do something. You're, this is a staffing company. What they're doing is they are hiring, they've identified somebody that would be a, you know, like, like the receptionist. So it's not somebody that's a, an employee of Roth. It is a person that Roth has found to perform a temporary service for us that we have the right to hire. The other thing I would point out on this is, we're replacing GWI at 125 bucks an hour at 50 bucks an hour. All right? And we have one person there. So.
I may be reading, I may be reading this the wrong way, but we're not giving a contract straight to Roth for hiring temporaries forever and a day. We're just going through Roth to get this one individual for six months.
Correct.
And if they're not cutting the mustard by February 1st, we're sending them out.
We're sending, we're cutting them loose and having someone else come in.
Because the last thing I want to do, having worked for the state, you, you get people that come in, they show great, they do great promise, and you give them that olive branch and hire them, and then the next day at work, they're not worth anything. So I want to make sure that we make a, I'm into hiring, I'm into retaining, I'm into having redundancy. I don't say get hit by a bus. I say if the other person wins the lottery, we need somebody to fall back, and we need them here yesterday. So I just wanted to try and get those cleared up.
Let's go to Kip first, and then we'll cut to you.
How does this factor in with the deputy finance officer position and the accounting and our director? So where, where are we putting this person? This is a different title. This is payroll and accounting payables account technician. Is that their term?
This, yes, that is their term. And that, mainly, they use that to explain what the main duties they would be performing, and those are the main duties that Kim was performing as the deputy finance officer. And, and on paper, technically, Kim's position was not termed deputy finance officer. It was actually, the name on paper was administrative services specialist. So to be honest with you, that name, deputy finance director, came about sometime before I got placed here. Not sure. But, does that make sense?
But you're, you're looking, you're looking, the people that you're interviewing are people that you would consider for your accountant one position.
Correct.
That's, that's what she's trying to do is.
Correct.
Fill that.
Fill the account one position.
Right. And to Mark's point, you can let this per, she can call, or Wayne can call them up tomorrow and say, what's her name, Linda Schuler, isn't working out, and they bring somebody else in. Right?
Yes.
So the person's being paid is a 1099 person from us, and they're getting, or they're getting paid directly from this.
They're getting paid by Roth.
Roth, and their benefits, et cetera, come from Roth.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So, but to Kip's point.
Making a commitment to Roth forever and a day.
No, we're not.
But to Kip's point, if we have a director, an accountant one, do we need another position in accounting, and that's something?
Well, this is, and again, you know, this, Wayne coming on as our finance officer, he has a strong financial background and experience in financial management, as well as grant management. And that's, it's going to depend on who we get onboard and what their strong suits are. So we're going to be able to build the department with what we need. The accountant one position was written specifically for, to fill in the gaps on what we were lacking as far as contract management and those type of services and overview. So it's, it's, it's very important to get that filled first. And then, that's what I was saying, we may come back to the board and say, you know, we might ask for another position, depending on the background, the individual's background that we get in, and what we still might be lacking in.
I, I think that's what you brought up.
So that it rounds.
In your manager's report is that.
The finance department.
The whole idea is, we don't know what his final recommendation is going to be about staffing. And I think you told us that, I mean, like, if you're asking my opinion, if you had to hire two people behind Wayne, you know, not that I'm voting with, with all the financial issues and the money that we're spending right now, but I think that comes down to what you and Wayne want.
Because we're looking at, as I explained before, too, looking at outsourcing with ADP, which is going to take, that's going to be a project within itself to implement. So it's going to be essential that we have the staffing available onboard to implement these initiatives. And then also, we talked about budget time, the financial software program that the town has been using. It's been the program that's been in place for years, and it needs replaced with something that matches our operations at this point in time. You know, the town is a lot more sophisticated than they used to be in terms of with the grants management and the different funds. It's not as straightforward as it used to be. And we need a much, a much more sophisticated accounting system to keep up with what we're actually doing and trying to track.
Again, I think it comes down to having boots on the ground and manpower, manpower, whatever. But what I would like to do is make sure that our specialist is working on the high projects and overseeing the two-week payroll period or whatever, and not, he's not muddled with six hours of doing payroll every two weeks when he needs to be focusing on bigger, bigger fish prizes.
And that's why we need the person to come in right away to handle mainly, and that's why you see accounts payable and payroll, because those are going to be the immediate tasks that this person's going to have to take on immediately.
I have one more. Can I say one thing? I, I think that we're, we're going in full circles here, and we're getting, the circle's just getting bigger and bigger as we continue to talk. We've got a, we've got a request for a contract to hire this one person for this one job that has nothing to do with all the other jobs. So I'd like to call the question.
I still have one more comment.
Last comment, go ahead.
So under GWI, we were running multiple AP runs a month. And I do think if we want to maximize this person's time and save the town some money, we need to look at how many AP runs we're doing. Because doing a run for 20 checks, we, we can do them every other week and have more checks and not spend all that time in prep for a really small run. So I do think going forward, since this is a contract position, we'll be paying by the hour, we need to look at some efficiencies around that in accounts payable.
Yes, it is highly unusual for a town of this size to do check runs every single week. It's more every month. That's more in line with what normal operations are. But I will say that there's going to be a, a curve with vendors, and we also need to, we've got contracts in place that are written that require payments focused around our weekly, weekly payments right now. So we have to be very careful on how we, yes, I agree, we need to disengage from that, but we need to be smart about how we do that, and not just cut it off.
We've had the question called, we're in a circle in this kind of stuff. That's fine to have it presented at the January meeting as to what steps we're taking, but it has nothing to do with hiring this person. So we have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Sorry, can I ask a question? So is it the sense of the board that you want us to do a background?
No.
Okay.
No, approve the contract. I, unless somebody wants to have a motion that says we're going to delay the implant, implantation of this, because I don't know how long that's going to take to do something. I just go on their website. It's a big company. This is much bigger than GWI. I mean, they're a national company. And so we're hiring, let's keep in mind, we're hiring them to hire an individual that is not an employee of theirs, which is completely different than hiring an accounting firm and a person there. And again, I would point out, this is 50 bucks an hour versus 125. So.
So, so if we start this contract, what does that do for playing out and ending the GWI contract?
You already have an end date with GWI.
They gave us one last month.
They are, they are finishing up at the end of December with doing on-hand work, and then the contract expires at the end of January. They're available throughout January just to answer questions from staff.
Okay.
That was, that was the November meeting. We talked about their plan. I think that's in the minutes. Okay?
It is.
All right. Let's go to open forum.
We have one sign up. That is Mr. Rusty Walker.
Hello, folks. Rusty Walker, 115 Seagull Lane. Chips sat over there and answered an awful lot of my questions while we, while we've been sitting here. So it's kind of taking some of the starch out of, out of my sermon. But congratulations to everybody. Hope the next two years of the current board is, is transparent, is positive, and next time, the two years when the next group's sitting down, we can say we've had two good years and let's keep moving on. Because the, the town, the town's growing, the town's changing, the town has a lot of needs, and the needs can be, can be addressed and the problems can be solved. But with that, back on Election Day, sitting around over at church while everybody was milling around, I wandered around and talked to several of the folks, sitting members, candidates, what have you. And I asked a question, and the answer that I got disturbed me. Didn't surprise me, but it disturbed me. Chips answered a lot of that, a lot of that question for me. But my question was, does this board meet at any other point in time other than the Wednesday morning meeting, first of the month, for two and a half, three hours? Nope. That's, that's all we're scheduled to be together. So you don't have a work session to talk about things that were brought up. Who's gone, you know, that Walker guy got up and he got to talking about beach accesses again. Who on the board's going to sit down and, well, let's see what he's got to say. No. So I can come back, you know, we'll come back two or three months later, bring up the same thing again. Board still hasn't, haven't gotten any, any feedback. Myself, other folks get up here, we've got concerns, we've got questions, and it kind of falls on deaf ears. You're not listening. We've looked Alderman Square in the face two or three months later. Well, what have you done about so-and-so? What are you talking about? I don't remember that. You go back to the minutes, you see where it was brought up, but nothing's been done. Nothing's been approached. Something that I would like to see, and I think it would be beneficial at least to the public that come up here, if somebody comes up with a concern, with a question, somebody on this board should take that and research it. Assign it to somebody. And then, next month, put it on the agenda and answer the question, whether it's positive, negative, or we don't care. But at least come back with a response. And let us know where we are. You know, out of time, I could go on, but that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I, you know, let us know that we're being heard and we've.
Okay.
And we're thought something of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So now. Yep. So now we are in, making sure I don't miss something here. Yep, attorney's report.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
I mean, nothing further to report.
You've, you've heard enough from me already.
Yeah, we've been going on for three hours. Just a couple of heads up. At the county meeting yesterday, the Heinz Park lodging now is available for employees of towns, municipalities, and elected officials here at half of the current rate. Current rate's $75. That is $37.50 for elected officials and for town employees if they want to use that. So the Heinz Park, apparently there's cabins and stuff they've done there. I thank everybody for their support during the election. And then the final thing is, on my Onwasa hat, the water dog is out here this week. And if everybody remembers what the water dog is, they actually have a water, a dog that can find leaks, because it senses, apparently, they can pick up the chlorine and the stuff in the water. So if you see Onwasa out with a dog, they're not walking their dog this week, that is a water dog. Second thing is, they're replacing meters out there. If you have not gotten to notice, they're putting in the electronic meters that make everything faster and allows them to monitor your stuff closely. The word on that is, you might feel a blip in the water when you turn it back on again, which I did this morning when they replaced my meter. So let's start with Mark.
First of all, thank everybody that came out today. I was probably the fullest I've seen this room all year. Thank everybody for their support with the election. Look forward to serving you to the best of my ability. For those of you that have concerns about where I work, I can get another job. I'm here for the town. I'm here to be an alderman. I'm here to do the best I can for the city. I hope everybody has a wonderful Christmas. I hope you had a great Thanksgiving. And we've been here long enough, so thank you all for coming out. Have a good day.
Kip?
I'll try to make it quick, but I want to make sure I cover everything. I encourage all of our residents and visitors to support the Rotary Club of Sneed's Ferry by participating in the fifth annual shrimp dip coming up on January 1st over at Beach Access 31, right across from Rogers Bay and, and Beach Bumps. Obviously, the event is an excellent example of our strong commitment to the community with a focus on bringing neighbors together for a chili dip in the ocean, and as a new and fun way to ring in the new year. It's also benefiting the Down Syndrome Network of Onslow and Carteret Counties. Last year, they raised a record $4,500. So look online, there's some information there for that as well. We hope that they can meet and exceed their generous goal from last year. To close out my first meeting, I want to begin by offering a sincere thank you to Joanne McDermott, Mike Benson, and Tom Leonard. Their years of service, dedication, and hard work have made a meaningful impact on our town. And we're truly grateful for their commitment to North Tofel Beach. To the residents, town staff, I wish you all a warm and joyous holiday season. May this Christmas bring peace, blessings, and time well spent with those you love. Merry Christmas and have a happy new year. Finally, sorry, I want to take a quick minute to express my deepest gratitude to three groups of people. To my family, who were here. The room's emptied out pretty good. But thank you for your patience, your honesty, and your unwavering love. You've kept me grounded and reminded me why service matters. To my friends who have supported me, thank you for the encouragement, those late-night conversations and support over the years. We still have a lot to do, so don't go too far. And to our, to my neighbors, supporters, mentors, thank you for placing trust in me. Your faith is not something I will take lightly. The swearing in marks the beginning of my work that we will do together, working to strengthen our community, to listen to. to listen with humility and lead with integrity. So I'm honored, I'm grateful, and I'm ready to serve. Thank you. Thank you all for staying, standing with me today and working with me in the four years ahead.
Uh-uh, you go last. Because that's the way they do it at the county. Lawrence.
The, I want to thank everyone that, that showed confidence in me by, by electing me to the position. I don't have any agenda. My, my, my agenda is what the town needs. My intention is to do what I can do to, to help the process. And if, if, I have no, no reason to, you know, I've lived to be an old man, and I'm, I'm still here, and I've decided I'm giving four more years to something, and, and I'm doing it to North Topsail Beach. So if, if, if I'm speaking, and if I'm talking with you, I'm concerned with what's going on and what we're doing. I've got things that I most like to do, but I'm gonna get involved in all the things that I can do. So I'm here for you, and, and I, I get what you say, Rusty, and I, it's one of, one of things that I've talked about with several people, and we're gonna respond to people. May not be what they want to hear, but we're gonna, we're gonna respond. So thank you all very much, and I look forward to a good four years.
Laura?
All right, so it's holiday season, which means we still need to pay attention to those speed limits out there, because everybody's flying around shopping, doing whatever. But we are seeing people really speeding. So please watch the, the roads, and if you see people speeding, please call the non-emergency number. Also, it's that time of year when all of our neighbors leave, and there are frozen pipes and bursts all around. So if you have a neighborhood Facebook group or a Facebook page, and, you know, you can let people know, now's the time, if they haven't done it already, to start insulating those outdoor shower pipes. That's a good thing. And also, I want to thank chief for, again, reiterating that you can have some of the firemen come in and take a look at your smoke detectors. So I just recently, again, had a family member whose dog chewed, chewed through a lithium ion battery and caught their house on fire. So be careful where you're storing those things. So I look forward to working with the new mayor and the new board. Congrats to all, and happy holidays.
Now, how many turtles?
I used to get to go first. I want to thank Alice and the staff for the really great Christmas program. It was, it was really great. And it looked like everybody here had a fantastic time. I want to thank everybody for coming out, or for those of you watching at home. I want to thank, boy, I'm really full of thanks today. I want to thank the former alderman, and Tom, Tom and Mike, and also Joanne. And I really look forward to working with the new board members as well, and the new mayor. With that all being said, I'm sad to report that Gene Beasley, the founder of the Karen Beasley Sea Turtle Rescue and Rehabilitation Center, passed away last night. North Topsail Beach has been a partner with the Sea Turtle Hospital in the protection and conservation of, of endangered sea turtles. Gene worked to save the turtles for over fifty years. Her conservation efforts resulted in over three thousand twenty-seven protected nests, over two hundred and forty-five hundred thousand emerged hatchlings, many of those in North Topsail Beach since she began formally collecting and submitting data in nineteen ninety-five. The Sea Turtle Hospital has seen over sixteen hundred sick and injured sea turtles come through its doors since the building first opened in nineteen ninety-seven. She was a native of North Carolina and a nineteen fifty-eight graduate of Duke University. She celebrated her ninetieth birthday in October. I hope, I probably should have saved that till last, because now I want to wish everyone a safe and happy Christmas and New Year's.
So, motion to go into closed session, and it would be legal advice. I don't have the statute sitting in front of me.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
I've gotta, I've gotta read the.
Can you turn to quiet privilege?
Yes, you got it. He's gonna give me the statute.
It's one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven A three. One forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A three.
Do I have a motion?
Yes. Yes. A motion, I just said a motion to go into closed.
In a second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to come out of closed session.
I make a motion to come out of closed session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No action was taken in closed session. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
You're a second?
Second.
We are, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.